Good evening and welcome to this session of our Plymouth annual town meeting. It's being held Monday evening, April 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at Plymouth North High School located on Aubrey Street. Town Clerk Kelly McKelreith has advised me that we now have a quorum of at least 108 elected town meeting members, and I therefore declare that a quorum being present this annual town meeting comes to order at 6:00 PM. Edward Fine is the police officer on duty, and once again, according to our town charter, Chapter 2, Section 5, Subsection 2, the town clerk keeps a record of attendance in pursuant to the next subsection. A representative town meeting member who cannot attend a session shall provide written notice to the clerk. Anyone wishing to inquire as to town meeting absence, as to reasons given of town meeting absence should check with the town clerk. I did get a call today, and I'm happy to receive calls regarding absence for a meeting such as this evening, but I always refer all of you to the town clerk. In addition, there have been some people that have asked for remote participation tonight because they had made other plans. Some people traveled to watch the eclipse. These are not reasons for remote participation. And again, just by way of explanation, it's not that simple to change midstream on the remote participation. We have to coordinate with the clerk, with the assistant moderator, with Plymouth Public Schools, with PAC TV, with OTI. It is not something that happens easily, and so when many people request that, we're unable to accommodate that. So, we ask that everybody plan and foresee that if we have a town meeting on the first Saturday in April or the third Saturday in October, it is very possible that you may be coming back on the following Monday or Tuesday. So, we ask that you keep that in mind. We continue to have the written materials that are available on Saturday, and again, pursuant to Chapter 2, Section 10, Subsection 2, representative town meeting members shall notify the town clerk in writing prior to town meeting as to any articles giving financial conflict of interest, and you're also reminded that the handset allows an option to abstain if needed. We have already voted to be in a hybrid format, so we will continue with that. I have since Saturday's meeting issued several rulings denying requests for motions to reconsider. I'd like to take this moment as a teaching moment to explain my rationale for the denial of the motions. There was a question as to whether or not we could reconsider Article 7A, the very first line item with Mr. Lynch's motion, and the person who asked about it had voted in favor of the motion. So, I denied it because in order to move to reconsider, you have to have been on the prevailing side. And in that particular case, a yes vote did not win. So, that was, the prevailing side would have been a no vote. So, only a no vote could ask to reconsider in that particular case. You don't get to do a do-over because you're on the losing side, but rather you can move to reconsider if you're on the prevailing side. So, another town meeting member contacted me and said, "I would like to reconsider all of Article 7." And so, the first thing I do is I check with the town clerk, and sure enough, the member did vote yes on the prevailing side on all of Article 7, except on Article 7A Subcommittee A. So, I had to deny the motion because he was not on the prevailing side when he made his request to reconsider all of Article 7. Now, in addition, this particular person, just for future understanding of how this would work, wanted to propose a motion to amend with a percentage decrease on the budget. That would be out of order. If you wanted to make a motion to reduce the main motion on the budget presented by Advisory and Finance Committee or what was voted, you would need to make a motion to amend on any of the main motions that were voted on Saturday. And your motion to amend would have to be a dollar amount and a line item. So, in this particular case, this person had a percentage, and it translated into several million dollars in a reduction, but we can't take a figure and just guess as to where we would reduce it. So, for future reference, you need to keep that in mind if you ever want to reduce, much as we've handled when we actually take the budget at the start of the budget at the annual meeting. We go line by line if somebody wants to add or subtract an amount. Finally, this person also wanted to adjourn town meeting to next Monday in order to provide additional time for staff to prepare recommended changes based on this person's request. And that's not the way it works. Staff has already made a presentation. It's been approved by the Finance Committee and the Select Board. It will be up to one of you to make your proposed changes. Certainly, staff can be available. But I wanted to mention that we also just can't willy-nilly decide to meet next Monday. You need to understand that now that we're doing the hybrid, it's become much more complicated because in order to do the hybrid town meeting, we need to make sure that OTI is available. We need to make sure that PAC TV is available and the Plymouth Public Schools, as well as town council, the clerk, and everyone else who is involved in preparing town meeting. So, we certainly can continue tonight to another adjourned session, but it's not as simple as getting up and saying, "I'd like to meet next Monday because there are too many people involved." And what I would do is I would recess the town meeting for more than a minute, and I would gather all of those people who work on the planning and the preparation of town meeting in order to find a date and time when they can all be available. So, I would certainly accept such a motion, but I wanted you to know that it's not as simple as just pulling a date and time out of a hat because that's not the way it's going to work. So, are there any other matters to come before town meeting before we continue where we left off? We will recess within two hours from the start of the meeting as provided in our charter, and then a quorum is presumed, so we'll reconvene following the evening recess, and we'll continue to proceed with the warrant. And I just want to again remind everybody, I've been asked that Plymouth Hometown Cleanup is May 17th and 18th, and if you wish to participate or have questions, please contact Patrick Farah. He's in the town hall. And remember that date if you'll be interested in participating. And once again, we want to thank the Plymouth Public Schools and specifically offering the coffee and the fact that they are assisting us throughout the evening with their building. So, at this time, we're going to begin now where we left off.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
There's a question on the floor. If for whatever reason we roll over tonight, do you have a dedicated date that we would reconvene?
No. No, not yet. As I said, we'll recess and determine when that would be. We have time at this point. So, Article 16. Christopher Merrill, Precinct 11, moves that the town appropriate the sum of $3 million to pay costs of constructing 26 family shelter units and education center with a deed restricted for affordable housing on the property located at 54 Industrial Park Road, Plymouth, Massachusetts, Lot 12A6 on Assessor's Map 102, by granting such funds to Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless, Inc., in exchange for which the Select Board are authorized to accept an affordable housing restriction pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 12, General Laws, Chapter 184, Sections 31 and 33, at 54 Industrial Park Road, Plymouth, Massachusetts, and for the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $3 million on a General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, and General Laws 44B, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issuing bonds or notes of the town therefore. I understand that Mr. Merrill is deferring to the petition of presentation from the Community Preservation Committee, and so at this time, we'll begin with the presentation from the Community Preservation Committee, and thereafter, we will then hear from the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Cohen, do we have a question at the back? Point of order?
Just as we waive the constable's reading of the warrant at the beginning, I would like to waive the presentations of all CPC articles. We have them at the CLPC meeting, we have them at the Finance Committee meeting, we have them at the Select Board meeting.
Excuse me, but you're out of order. What you can do procedurally, if you want to move the question and close debate, you can do that. Do you want to move the question?
No, because I would like...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cohen.
Here we go. Bill Cohen, Community Preservation Committee. I will be, I know that many of you have heard this presentation with the Finance Committee, the Select Board. If you've attended CPC meetings or caucuses, I understand that, but there are people viewing at home, and we want to make sure the residents understand how their CP funds are being used accordingly. I'd also like to take the moment just to say, tonight, we're going to make decisions on Article 16A, B, C, and D, and neither of these articles will require us to raise or appropriate taxes. The Community Preservation Act was acquired and passed in 2002. The money is coming in for housing, preserving of open space, and protecting of historical landmarks. So, we have the money. It's there for this purpose. No decisions you're making tonight are going to raise taxes. I wanted to make that clear, how the Community Preservation Act works. And, you know, as we go through the year, a certain amount of money is collected, and each quarter from residents, you'll see that on your tax bill, CPA, and that money is put into accounts for housing, historical, and open space. 10% for each of those, and a remaining discretionary amount, approximately 70% used for accommodation thereto. So, you can see how the CPA works. I wanted to make sure that people understood what monies that we were utilizing. I'd like to first go to 16A. This is the Community Preservation Committee's request for affordable housing. Tonight, we are making recommendations of nearly $7,960,000 of affordable housing requests. This is the largest CPA affordable housing request across the state in the use of the CPA funds. We're creating nearly 94 units of affordable housing, and 103 of those will count towards subsidized housing inventory. You'll hear a lot about subsidized housing inventory, but in the end, we're going to have a count of nearly 103, and we're only creating 94. So, we come out on top on the SHI overall in these recommendations. And the first article is a request for $3 million for the renovation of 54 Industrial Park Road. This is going to give us an affordable deed restriction for 30 years. We have the cooperation of the tenant, the recipient of these funds to accommodate future requests of restrictions. The zoning has been approved for this location, for the use of the building under the Dover Amendment. The building will be utilized not only for 26 affordable units, but it will also be utilized for an education center. This is a very vital part of the Plymouth Area Coalition. They're the applicant. They're applying for the money. They built a facility out on Route 80 in Kingston in the 1990s. They've run that facility for many years. It's a combination of dealing with people who are losing their homes, and they have children, and they have coordinated emergency temporary housing to work with these families in terms of an educational opportunity, of bringing in different people to help them resolve some of the issues that brought them to this circumstance. The Plymouth Area Coalition will provide onsite supervision at the location. They will work with the clients that are living there temporarily. They could live there up to a year to find permanent housing and utilize the educational opportunities to strengthen the family and provide them with the skills to become sustainable over a period of time and not fall into this situation again. Right now, if you go homeless in Plymouth and you have a child, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a law, and that kicks in where they have to make sure that child has a place to stay. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts facilitates numerous agencies across the state to protect the interests of their child. They have to find housing. Right now, those children are removed from Plymouth, and they're sent to shelters outside of Plymouth. The town of Plymouth has a responsibility. If that person chooses to continue being educated in Plymouth, they're transferred back to Plymouth. So, we need to recognize there is a cost of not providing a possible shelter in Plymouth. And that's what this is. It's a possible shelter for residents that go homeless with children. It's not guaranteed because the units could be filled, and the person would have to go somewhere else, or someone was moved to that facility from another location from a different purpose. But there is a process of reevaluating where people are living to move them closer to the services or the community in which they were displaced. So, there is a way of dealing with that. And another thing I wanted to make sure people understood is that in Kingston, at the Exit 9, at the Howard Johnson's, the Baypoint Hotel out there, it's important to understand that hotel out there is run by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This organization, Plymouth Area Coalition, they own and operate the facility on Route 80, and they do not own that facility. The Commonwealth runs that facility. The Plymouth Area Coalition does provide community services to those tenants that are in that location. They're proposing to make these alterations to this building and own it. And it's another important thing to understand is that the location has a very residential feel. You'll see some slides of what the building looks like, and this is important because when someone is displaced and they're looking for a place to live, there's a dignity with the design of this building. It has a very residential feel to it. It's a place where someone can get the educational services in the temporary shelter to find a home for them themselves and their family and their child. And it's important to note that our industrial park has changed over the last 30 years. It is no longer an isolated location where people are doing business. It's a location that has grown up around it, transportation. 44 comes through the area now. There is a public transportation, train accommodations, so you have intermodal transportation opportunities. There's businesses that have grown up in the area that are looking for employment opportunity. It's sustainable to think that we should be moving people closer to work opportunities and transportation opportunities. So, this location, the Plymouth Industrial Park, is well-suited for this location, and the Plymouth Area Coalition has been looking for nearly seven years for this location. It's not a new thing that they've been looking for, and they've been operating in Plymouth since the 1980s. I'd like to introduce Sue Giovinetti from the Plymouth Area Coalition. She can walk you through the slides of the request that's being made for town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Susan Giovinetti. She's with the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless, and she is a Plymouth resident. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you all for taking the time. I realize that you have heard this presentation several times. I hope that while we might be reviewing a lot of what you've heard, we'll also be able to shed some additional light and insight into the effectiveness of the emergency assistance family sheltering system and how it really does make a difference in our community and potentially with this new site. You know, we will be impacting those of our neighbors who don't have shelter and helping them have a roof over their head for a temporary time. So, if I... Oops. Now I shut it off. Okay. So, this is the building. Many of you came by and visited when we had our open house. As Bill said, it is a very stately residential feel. It was actually designed by the wife of the owner, the original owner, Patricia Bartlett. We feel very strongly that its location, as Bill mentioned, is very central to everything that this population would need. Number one, transportation. Number two, jobs. Retail resources, Boys and Girls Club right down the street, childcare right down the street. It is very close, well, the Gatter goes right by, so it can quickly get you to the train station. It just suits all of our clients' needs so well. It will allow us, it's a four-level building. We will be doing interior design work and renovation, but the top three floors will be units for families and meeting rooms where they'll meet their caseworkers and rehousing specialists. The lower level, which is really the beauty of the building, will allow us to have a sizable education room, which will open up the education program that we traditionally have just for shelter residents. It will allow us the opportunity to then have that made available to people in our own community. It has a street-level side entrance. It does not interfere at all with the shelter piece, so that would be an additional resource that traditionally we don't have in our Route 80 shelter. This is, yes, we did pay a million and a half for it. That was the rate at the time. That's the market, right? We always would prefer to pay less for property, but that was after a seven-year search. That was what we were faced with, and it did check off every box. Excuse me. It is assessed for, I believe, a little bit over that by the town. The interior renovations that we will be doing, we will be making it completely ADA compatible. I hope that I can do it again. Need to do this one. Here we go. I think a lot of these points have already been mentioned. It will have a childcare room on the first, on the, actually, the second level of the building. Each unit, when I speak of a unit, that's a family unit. When you're in an EA, Emergency Assistance Shelter, the family lives in one room, two sets of bunk beds, bureaus, that's, this is a temporary situation during the interim while families overcome obstacles and find their way onto sustainable housing. We'll be, we look to, it's in, we are anticipating adding a minimum of 20 new jobs into the area as we staff this, so that we're very pleased to be able to say that. The education program does cover a breadth of topics from job search and personal finance to personal health, parenting. So, we're trying to touch every area that where we can strengthen families because what we have to remember is that this all starts when children do not have stable housing. They have no guarantee of a roof over their head. Their parents, their guardians, then go to the state DTA and then present themselves as needing shelter. That is the path that a homeless family navigates. I know there are several questions about whether families within Plymouth, would it be all Plymouth residents? There are no guarantees to that. Will Plymouth residents be looked at preferentially? Absolutely. There is no question. The, what you have to bear in mind is that always, always, the children and the family are what the state looks at when they're doing placement. So, they want to be sure that the services and the schooling and any support programs that the family are making use of, that they're all within proximity of this family so that they can get back on their feet and be going out on their own. So, that's no question. Will Plymouth people be able to be in the shelter? Absolutely, absolutely. But there's no guarantee that every person in that building would be from Plymouth. The guarantee that we can tell you is that up until today and going forward, if you found yourself homeless with your children in the town of Plymouth, you would be moving to another area. There is no place for Plymouth children and their guardians, parents, to stay. Their circle would be disrupted. And I can tell you that until, my first day at the Coalition, my second day, actually, I looked out, and I heard a car out in front, and I looked out the window, and I watched a van pull up, and a young mom got out of the van, and she had three children, two backpacks, and I think maybe three kitchen trash bags of belongings. Until you've seen that and understand what that point of desperation is, so they present themselves, you know, they've been placed with us, they come in, and then we start from day one, helping them rebuild and providing them with every service that we possibly can. We do a good job. For 39 years, the Plymouth Area Coalition, with the help of the Plymouth community and the greater Plymouth community, has really been able to do this, and we are really respectfully asking your support of this because I know it's the right thing. I don't say that lightly, and we don't go around and buy buildings lightly. It's completely board-supported. We've done our due diligence with the town. We've spoken to all the different departments. We feel that this is right, and I know many of you do as well. I have with me Emily Rothschild, who's our development analyst. If anyone has questions in that regard.
Can I have a mic? Thank you. 30 seconds. You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We're now going to go to Stephen Neerman. He is the chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Welcome, Mr. Neerman. We need a mic for him as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In rejecting Article 16A, the concerns of the Advisory and Finance Committee are too many to list, but I want to make something very clear here, that we are the Advisory and Finance Committee, not the Advisory and Emotions Committee. We are the Advisory and Finance Committee. We are tasked with making sure that the town of Plymouth spends your taxpayer dollars judiciously and for the benefit of said taxpayers, good stewards of taxpayer money. A lot has been said in the past few months about our committee, some not so kind, and specifically about our work on Article 16A, both verbal and in the media, print, and radio, misinformation and disinformation. The eight members of the 14 voting members on our committee did not vote, excuse me, I don't get a vote because I'm actually there for the tiebreaker, but had I voted, I would have joined the majority. But we have been painted by the Plymouth Independent and others as anti-immigrant and anti-homeless people. I take great exception to that labeling. As a former longtime journalist who began my career at the Washington Post as an editor and a reporter, I would caution the Plymouth Independent for giving outsized coverage to organizations run by members who are on your own board, coverage which may then be perceived as biased. It's just not a good optic. Our committee spent an incredible amount of time and energy vetting out this Article 16A and asking difficult and uncomfortable questions, but the bottom line is this, and as the Coalition made clear here today, the decision of which homeless families end up in proposed Plymouth Industrial Park Shelter is solely in the hands of the state's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, not in the hands of the Coalition, and not in the hands of the town of Plymouth. Then it is critical to know what criteria the agency uses for placement, eligibility From that agency's website, there are four priorities, and I have it right here in detail for anybody who wants to see it, starting with priority number one, families that have been determined by the Department of Transitional Assistance to be at imminent risk of harm due to domestic violence. And then down the list, priority 2, 3, 4, nowhere in writing on that list does it prioritize somebody living in the town where that very shelter exists. Thus, there is no guarantee that a single Plymouth homeless family will gain entry into this proposed Plymouth shelter. There is no guarantee that this $3 million will fulfill the Coalition's stated mission of reducing homelessness in the town of Plymouth. That is the major reason the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting reject Article 16A, because if any organization comes before us asking for $3 million of your hard-earned taxpayer dollars, there must be a significant and direct benefit to the residents of Plymouth and you, the taxpayer. The Advisory and Finance Committee strongly is to do the town meeting reps here to spare the town of $3 million and reject Article 16A. Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Stephen Neerman. He is the chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. This will be a two-thirds vote. You have the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. In addition, for this particular motion and the rest of Article 16, we also have the book from the Community Preservation Committee available for your use. We're going to begin with town meeting members first before residents. We have Richard Cirque, Precinct 2, followed by Virginia Davis, Precinct 4.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was initially opposed to this article, but after considering it further and after viewing the property at the Coalition's open house a week ago Saturday, I changed my mind. My initial op- My initial opposition was based on the apparent incongruity of housing in an industrial park. After all, Plymouth's zoning bylaw provides that no property can be used for a prohibited use, and in the light industrial zone in which this property is located, residential use is a prohibited use. However, Massachusetts law contains an exception when it comes to subsidized housing. If property is owned or leased by a nonprofit educational corporation, it can be used for an otherwise prohibited use. And the courts have held that a homeless shelter qualifies as an educational use because it teaches its occupants essential life skills. As a result, the only way in which property in the light industrial zone can be converted to residential purposes is if it's a homeless shelter. This analysis is acknowledged by all parties. As a result, the issue before us is not one of use, but is instead one of financing. The issue before us is this: Should we allow CPC funds to be used to renovate a building formally used as an office building in order to convert it into a homeless shelter? The most vocal opponent to this article is the owner of an interest in property two doors down the road, who has spoken against this article, at most, if not all of the precinct caucuses. I can't help wondering whether his opposition would be so vehement if the Coalition had instead, say, bought the Salvation Army building across from Friendly's on Long Pond Road. That property is zoned highway commercial, and in the highway commercial zone, as in the light industrial zone, residential use is prohibited, except for subsidized housing. I can't help believe, but believe that if we were talking about the Long Pond Road property and not the industrial park road property, his opposition would be less intense, or perhaps nonexistent. And that explains why I changed my mind from initial opposition to eventual support.
Eleven, ten seconds.
I'm going to need another minute, Mr. Moderator.
I have quite a few speakers. Is there any objection to Mr. Cirque continuing for another minute?
Okay.
Thank you.
I came to the conclusion that my initial opposition was really based mainly on use and not on financing. My initial opposition was based on a wish that a homeless shelter would be located in a less conspicuous place in relation to its surroundings. I wanted a homeless shelter to be invisible. But the fact is that, as the slide showed, the facade of the industrial park road property already is residential in appearance.
Thirty seconds.
It will require no exterior makeover to convert its use from an office building into a homeless shelter. If we're talking about converting a building with a commercial or industrial facade into a building with a residential facade, I might have, I might not have changed my mind. But this building is already residential in appearance. Upon looking at this article in those terms, my initial opposition gave way to support. My initial opposition had really been based on financing, but instead, not on financing, but on use. I asked, I urge you to ascertain what your real motivation is before voting on this article. I urge you to resist the inclination, like the one I had, to use financing as a proxy for use.
Mr. Cirque, that extra minute is up.
I've got 30 seconds.
Any further objection to Mr. Cirque speaking, another 30 seconds.
I found confirmation for my changed opinion in the eloquent invocation given by the minister at the start of this Town Meeting on Saturday, when he urged us, in part, to quote, "Protect the least of those among us, including the indigent, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, the strangers in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten." Thank you.
Virginia Davis, Precinct Four, followed by Kathleen Dunn, Precinct Four. Welcome, Virginia Davis.
Virginia Davis, Precinct Four, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am speaking in favor of Article 16A. It is time for Plymouth to provide a place for homeless families. Other towns have been providing a place for them to be safe until they can find a suitable home and a place to live. And I'm going to quote Eleanor Roosevelt. "The motivating force of the theory of the democratic way of life is still a belief that as individuals, we live cooperatively and to the best of our ability to serve the community in which we live." Thank you.
Kathleen Dunn, Precinct Four, followed by Lawrence Peiser, Precinct Three.
Kathleen Dunn, Precinct Four. The Coalition for the Homeless is seeking a place for families that is badly needed for individuals with children who find themselves homeless. It is a crisis situation. The Board of the Coalition, looking for a place for seven years, finds a perfect, a perfect location that offers jobs, transportation, and a homey feel about it. I think people deserve that dignity, that respect. When this is renovated, it's going to be much more than, more than a shelter for 26 families. It's going to be, provide education in parenting and in finances, and it's going to also educate people in proactive services. Have you ever tried to mire yourself in some of the services that are available to you? This is the kind of education that parents who are homeless need. And what Sue said, they do do an amazing job. But most of all, it will provide a safe, stable place for children to learn and grow as their parents seek to, seek adequate housing and a hand up. Many of these children have lived short, chaotic lives as a result of homelessness. These shelters actually save people, taxpayers, money in the long run, when parents find stable housing and continue to work. Is it a perfect solution? In many ways, it is. But let's be honest here, finding residences for homeless people is always difficult. We have a chance to offer people hope. Let's do it.
Thank you. Lawrence Peiser, Precinct Three, followed by James Grillo, Precinct Eight, if we can bring him in as a panelist. Mr. Peiser?
Lawrence Peiser, Precinct Three. I'm a major fan of Sue Giovinetti. Was brought up to appreciate the need for emergency shelter. However, the problem that we face is, I think it was well-stated by Mr. Neumann, if the state is going to set the rules and choose the occupants, the state pays for the shelter. There should be a shelter. It's not Plymouth's obligation to pay for it. Think about the Registry of Motor Vehicles. I'm very much in favor of the Registry of Motor Vehicles. They protect me as I drive through the town of Plymouth, and it is a good organization. No one would suggest that the town of Plymouth provide money for the Registry of Motor Vehicles. Sadly, I came to the same conclusion. We ought not to use $3 million of our dollars for an operation while it's located in Plymouth is not dedicated only to the people of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you. We can now bring in James Grillo. Mr. Grillo is joining us remotely. Do we have him as a panelist yet? Welcome, James Grillo. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, for those of you who do know me, I am currently studying abroad at the London School of Economics. I do want to say that the idea that preserving this town's economic future relies on turning away families and children is, I find that idea entirely laughable. The understanding that people within a 20-mile radius, and for reference, my home in southern Plymouth is 15 miles from our town hall, the understanding that people 20 miles away from Plymouth are somehow not a concern for the town is a total misunderstanding of what our society and Commonwealth is based on. There is no wall around Plymouth. We cannot make a wall around Plymouth. But there is an economic need to educate and understand better human capital in our town, to not have human capital, to not give a transitory period to those who would value a high school diploma like nothing else. We are simply turning away people who would utilize the trucks we purchased on Saturday and get to work. We are turning people away who will become glad and happy taxpayers of our town in the future, and we're simply courting more crime and more discomfort and chaos, because idle hands make the devil's workshop. And when you turn away 90 families, which include innumerable children, you are simply asking them to violate the loitering law that we passed two days ago. You are going to increase the costs on our fire and police departments by turning away children and undereducating them for their future. We, the short investment of protecting them and keeping them safe and educated will do more good for our town in the long term than the short term. Do not miss the forest of the trees. Do not buy into these arguments. Understand that the social good and the economic good are sometimes intertwined, and this is one of those instances. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen LaFerry, Precinct 18, followed by John Hammond, Precinct 18. Mr. LaFerry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Giovinetti, in the interest of saving our tax money, have we considered the Mass Save programs from Eversource, providing services to this facility?
Ms. Giovinetti.
Our construction company is looking at every, they're, they're looking at every angle of the construction, so I would say yes. They're looking, we're trying to make it as green as possible. We're, yes, we're looking at every cost savings we possibly can, as well as repurposing things within the building that we won't be using.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And we continue, John Hammond, Precinct 18, Matthew Tavares, Precinct Two. This is Plymouth Annual Town Meeting, is coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. We're in the evening session of our second day. Mr. Hammond.
By way of disclosure, I hope you can understand me through this mask. I actually worked at the Kingston Shelter as a group therapist some 15 years ago or so. And I want to be careful. We talk about people being needy and needing education. They do, but I was struck by how ordinary the people were who were there. And the other thing I want to say is that it's true that there will be no guarantee that Plymouth residents will get to be in this program, but if we don't do it, there's a guarantee that they certainly won't be, unless the town is thinking about starting its own shelter program, which I think is very unlikely. Thank you.
Matthew Tavares, followed by Mark Pulzinnelli, if we can bring him in as a panelist from Precinct One, and also Kendra O'Brien as a panelist, Precinct Seven. Mr. Tavares.
Matt Tavares, Precinct Two. Two things that I was hoping to get clarified, or one's a statement. I believe when we were all listening to the, the school board chair, she mentioned that there were 100 homeless childrens or homeless families within our public schools. So, bear in mind that those are children that we are bringing to our schools that would greatly benefit from something like this within their area, that we're, and I am not sure of the exact number, that would be, being brought here via transportation that we're paying for already. If the school committee can speak to that, that would be great. The other point that I'd like to ask a question of the CPC chair, or, or whoever can answer this question, in regards to the, the FinCom question regarding overseeing our tax dollars and making sure that they're spent not on something like this, or in, in, in this sort of area. Do you have any comments to that?
Community Preservation and Michelle Badger, Chair, if you want to go down and get ready to respond.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to make this one thing understood, that when the Community Preservation Committee takes up an application for affordable housing, we have recognized over 23 years that there's a diversity in that demographic. There are people struggling, elderly people, disabled people, there are people, working people, trying to buy their first home. If you notice, the recommendations that we're making at Town Meeting, not only in this Town Meeting, but previous Town Meetings, we're going after the different demographics, from people from emergency housing to trying to find their first house after they graduate from college and can't afford housing. So, you're, you're looking at a strategy that we've always approached. When you look at affordable housing, it's a lot more complicated in terms of serving the demographics that are out there. This is just one of the demographics that we're serving, but I'll defer to Michelle Badger from the school committee.
Mr. Cohen, he's Chair of the Community Preservation. Michelle Badger, welcome, Plymouth School Committee.
Thank you. I hope I get the answer to your question. I can't find where Matt went. Oh, there you are, sorry. So, our breakdown is we've had 125 homeless students here throughout the year. That breaks down into 69 homeless students who attend our Plymouth Public Schools and are not required, like, extra transportation for us. And then there are 20 students from outside the Plymouth Public Schools that we transport into the district, and 36 students that are coming in from other districts, that other districts are paying to have attend our public schools. So, our projected annual cost is about $357,000, and it's, so far to date, we've spent about $270,000, $207,000, sorry, for all of our homeless students. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to continue and bring in, we're going to bring in Kendra.
She's a student.
Mark Pulzinnelli. Mark Pulzinnelli, followed by Jennifer Harris. Welcome, Mr. Pulzinnelli.
Hi, thank you. Mark Pulzinnelli, Precinct One. I'd like to address the, the argument we've heard a couple times now, that we shouldn't support this project because we can't guarantee it'll be all Plymouth residents utilizing this shelter, and please forgive my voice, I'm a bit sick. But I'd like people to think back on other articles, CPC articles we've supported in the past, whether it be a, a playground or conservation land, building a trail through it. We're never guaranteeing in any of those projects that only Plymouth residents will utilize these, these projects, these services. Anybody can go to a playground. It's many out-of-town people and in-town people. I really don't think that argument holds any weight when you think about all the other projects. I mean, look at the Spire Center. We provided them with millions of dollars to do renovations. Everybody attending a show at a Spire, at the Spire Center is not a Plymouth resident. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to provide needed shelter for families in the area, and I'd urge people to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Harris, Precinct 13. Is that Jennifer back there? I'm sorry, in the blue dress. Could you come to the microphone?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Please speak.
Andrea Nedley.
Andrea Nedley. Welcome, Andrea.
Um, 30-plus years ago, there were people in Plymouth, this town, that said, "We have a need." They've came together, and they went forth, and the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless was born. Thanks to the graciousness of the Sisters of Divine Providence, that's where the shelter went. It was a need then, again, it's a need now. It was nice that it's in Kingston, but it was us and Plymouth that wanted this to be. We need to have a shelter here to help the families in our own town and bring it back home where it started. Thank you.
Russell Brewster, Precinct 15, followed by Harrison Quinn. If you can bring him in as a panelist. Thank you, Mr. Brewster. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Treffletti. Russell Brewster, Chair, Precinct 15. I'd like to go back to Mr. Neumann's original comment. We've asked them to be the Advisory and Finance Committee, and we're talking about a lot of emotion, and we're talking about, yes, it would be nice, and yes, we'd like to do something for the homeless. Yes, all of these things are nice. We're here to look at finance. It is finance. And if we, and... And if we, and also, I'd like to mention that this is one of the first times that I've stood up and agreed with Mr. Peiser, so that's a huge thing. But let's talk some specifics. Yes, it's not going to be for Plymouth residents. That's a minus. But also, we're also talking about the amount of children, if you take 26 by 1 and 1/2, which is the natural average, we're talking about $1 million that we're going to have to put out for these children. Yes, they should get education. Yes, they should have a place to live. I really feel this is not the right place and not the right time for this building. This building is within spaces of schools and other things, and it's not in a residential area. And I would ask Town Meeting to not go by emotion, go by the facts, go by the economics. And all we have to do is look at Kingston, and there's a lot of trouble there, and we just need to look at the facts and not emotion. Thank you.
Harrison Quinn, Precinct 2. We'll bring him in as a panelist, followed by Stephen Lyden, Precinct 17. Welcome, Harrison Quinn. Is he with us?
Hi.
Go ahead, Mr. Quinn.
Hi, Harrison Quinn.
Go ahead. We can hear you.
So, let's speak the facts. That is, Plymouth is doing nothing, and that's not a solution. We have the ability to help people in need, and that is something that we, for time voiding of deals. Financial speaking, maybe saving.
Mr., Mr., your mic is muffled. Are you able to fix that?
It may be better now?
Yes, it's better.
Okay. So again, I'll start real quick. We're doing nothing, and that's not a solution. So we need to do something. This is something, and this is a good solution. Financial speaking, it will create jobs for people in the town. It will help people who need to find jobs, go out and get those jobs, and it will save the school budget that's already stressed and the country transportation is pretty busy now.
Mr. Quinn, Mr. Quinn, it is difficult to hear you. I do have one question for you. Are you in favor of the motion or opposed? You're in favor, thank you. Unfortunately, it's difficult to hear you. We're going to continue.
Steve Lyden, Precinct 17. First of all, I'd like to tell the Finance Committee that I have the utmost respect for them. I couldn't be on their committee because I couldn't do the amount of work that they have to do. As far as the independent goes, to me, that's like the old speak-out. It's worthless. It's biased, and it doesn't tell the whole truth. As was said earlier, we have a lot of projects in this town that were paid through the CPC. Some of that money comes from the state, from the deeds, so it's not all the Plymouth money. And the other thing is, we have a lot of projects here, like the Spire Center and parks and stuff. If you go down to Nelson Park, you can't get a parking space, and they're not all Plymouth people. I know we're not supposed to look at this, you know, through emotions, but, you know, these people have need someplace to go. You can't build a shelter and hold it vacant until you fill it with Plymouth people. Plymouth people will be taken care of. Maybe not in this shelter, but they'll be put in another one. So I support this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to continue with Kenneth Stone, followed by Arthur Deloge. Mr. Stone, welcome.
Thank you. With regards to Mr. Brewster's question on the Broadway Kingston facility, yes, if you could respond to that, please.
Susan Jovanetti.
So, I'm not clear what he was actually, other that there were problems in Kingston. So I'm not sure what he's actually speaking of, but perhaps he could provide me with some clarification. I can, while I'm waiting for that, I can say that the majority of the children in shelter are the children of 20- and 30-year-olds, and they are, three-quarters of them are five and under, and they either go to Head Start or go to early childhood care. So I can tell you that, that the larger number of our children are not in the school system. We have to locate, we have the Pilgrim's Hope Shelter on Route 80, which Kathy Dunn referred to. There are, there are no problems there. Someone had made a reference about the number of emergency assistance responses there. Very easily explained. Again, families without vehicles. That facility was built in 1994, when people didn't even talk about homelessness. There was a big hill in front of the building. That hill came down in 2012, and we very proudly have a sign out front that says Plymouth Area Coalition. We talk about homelessness because it's a reality. Fire responses, yes. All of our emergency systems are tied into the 911 call emergencies. It's tied right into our smoke, our smoke alarms are tied into it. We had our kitchens and bathrooms redone, say, 10 years ago, I believe. It was before I was at the Coalition. When they did the kitchens, they did not put in commercial-grade venting. As a result, when families are preparing their meals, it couldn't vent properly. Three years ago, two and a half years ago, I had those vent systems all changed over to commercial grade, and you can talk to the Kingston Fire Department, and they will tell you their responses are minimal at this point. So I'm hoping, Russell, that answers your question.
Thank you. Arthur Deloge, followed by Robert Trosel. Can we bring in Robert Trosel as a panelist? Mr. Deloge.
Good evening. Artis Loges, Precinct 15. Growing up, my mom and dad lived Samaritan life. They would always say, "What's mine is yours." That's an ideal I try to live up to every day. And my dad was always stopping to help people. And he'd say, and I'd say, "Why are you stopping, Dad?" He'd say, "Oh, I've got to go talk to these people." And as the parable of the good Samaritan goes, he would go up to them. He didn't care what they looked like. He didn't ask them what religion they practiced, and he didn't ask them where they were from. He just tried to help them as best he could. I will be voting yes for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring in Robert Trosel, and next, in the back there, the fourth person in the row, I don't know if you're a Town Me member. If you are, you're not, okay. We have a practice here, we're going to call on Town Me members first, so we're going to do Robert Trosel. Welcome, Robert Trosel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Steve Trufletti. I've been told that sometimes I talk too long, so make sure I speak within the allotted few minutes. Number one, the speaker before me had a wonderful, wonderful attitude. I also want to thank Sue, Bill Cohen, and the, I forgot the third person, for the presentations on this 16A. I will be voting yes, and the reason is, I've spent 34 years as a probation officer in two counties, Plymouth County and Norfolk County. Spent the last 14 years as a public defender with the Plymouth District Court. Many of my clients have received beautiful treatment over at Route 80, where they put up family members and children, food pantry. I'm familiar with the old Howard Johnsons and the work that Sue was doing there with the people. And my main concern, just three things. I spoke today with Mr. Cohen, Bill. My main thinking for people that are opposed, and it's just with Mr. Russell, Mr. Brewster, spoke up, I think it's a money issue on many people that may be in the minority, hopefully. And I can agree with the money issue, but I specifically asked, and it was presented today, the first comment by Bill was that this is not tax money coming, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, it's not tax money coming out of the Plymouth budget. It is through the committee CPC, and that is not tax money coming out of the budget there. These people need places to live, and I would love to know what the figure is right now. I'm sure there's plenty of people within a 20-mile radius under the state law that are coming possibly to Plymouth for their education. I support 100% trying to help people that have had a tough knock in life, and many of them I did meet down at the police station after some trouble happened. People were taken off the street. Family members were left to move on for themselves. So I think this is a great opportunity. Go ahead.
Three seconds. Go ahead.
I think this is a great opportunity for the community and the people I'm hearing speak tonight, and the majority so far see that. And one of the, one of the principles that I've gone by, always gone by when I meet people, just like the previous speaker, he was awesome, "There but for the grace of God, go on." Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope everybody has a chance to speak and really votes and balances, as the chairman said, the money finances versus the emotional. In my opinion, we're not taking money out of the budget. We're trying to take care of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Trosel, Precinct 10. Now we're going to Brendan Brady, Precinct 10, followed by Betty Cavaco, Precinct 6. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A question that hopefully Mr. Cohen can answer. If this is approved, how much closer does this put us towards our required affordable housing, or if at all? Because this might be an instance where we can control what and where that housing goes, rather than some of these larger 40B housing complexes that have been out of our control.
Mr. Cohen, Community Preservation.
I'd like to defer to Lee Hartman.
Lee Hartman is Director of Planning and Development, responding to a question from Brendan Brady, Precinct 10. We're debating Article 16A. Mr. Cohen.
I guess I conferred with Lee, and he indicated the same that I would say. So there, the town of Plymouth keeps a count through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which is called the Subsidized Housing Inventory Count. Plymouth is currently at 6.9% at its count. If you have 10%, you have some insulation against 40Bs, which is a good thing. But in the past, we have never really achieved anywhere near than the 10, but we have got to a situation where we have brought on enough affordable units over a period of time, along with having a housing plan, where we've created a safe harbor for a period of time, where you cannot use a 40B for a certain point of time. So will this project, the 26 units, count towards this? No, they will not count towards the subsidized housing inventory. But it's important to note that in the following articles on 16B, we're only buying down six units in a complex of 40, but the state gives us credit for all 40 units. So we come out on top with the SHI when, at the end of the day, here tonight in the town of Plymouth.
That second statement there, you're saying 16C, so this article does not count towards.
16, yes, I'm sorry. 16A does not count.
We're just focusing on 16A right now.
16A does not count.
Does not, okay.
But I was referring to 16B, the next article where.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brady, thank you. Betty Cavaco, Precinct 6, followed by Kevin Lynch, Precinct 5. Please bring him in as a panelist. Betty Cavaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I sit here and look, and it's like, you know, we're America's hometown. We should be the leaders for this entire state. And I've actually had the pleasure quietly of working with Susan and actually Mr. Quintle, and the folks that are in need so desperately around the holidays, and the folks that look to the Plymouth community to help them. And I think the only thing I needed to hear is we have 125 homeless children, and we really should take that into consideration. And I do support this article. Thank you.
Kevin Lynch, followed by Everett Malaguti, Precinct 1.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Delap.
Yes, sir, I move the question.
Motion to close debate. At this time, we'll look around the room. I see in the room, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 people who would like to speak, and I have one in the queue. All right, so this is not debatable, and it is a 2/3 vote, and it will be the first vote of the evening, and when Town Meeting sees the light go on, we will begin the vote. This is the vote as to whether to close debate on Article 16A, and the light is on. You are now voting. This is Plymouth's Annual Town Meeting. It's coming to you live on Monday, April 8. We are in the evening session. This is our second day of Town Meeting. We are going chronologically through the warrant, and we are beginning with Article 16A, which is the motion for affordable housing, the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless. Voting has concluded, and we will now see the total on the vote. 84 say yes, 49 say no, 2 abstentions. The motion does not carry. While we look at the precincts, we're going to continue and bring in Mr. Lynch. So welcome Kevin Lynch as a panelist, and it'll be followed by Everett Malaguti, Precinct 2. Mr. Lynch, good evening. And I understand he is coming. For those of you that are watching, we're here live at Plymouth North High School on Aubrey Street. Mr. Lynch? And we have people participating remotely, and I see that Kevin Lynch is with us, and good evening, Kevin Lynch.
Yes, hi, thank you very much. Again, Mr. Brady, I appreciate you bringing up that point and making sure that people realize that 16A was lumped in with the other three articles as a means to somehow or other, perhaps not have us understand this is not counting for affordable housing. And as far as the residential feel for that building, I do agree. You look at a picture, if it dropped into a residential neighborhood, absolutely. Next, the, I guess the point, you don't have to go and answer this, but Ms. Jovanetti, is that there are a number of different towns that will be accessing this shelter. How many of those other towns actually are contributing to this shelter? And lastly, or just a couple of things right here, you know, my motivation for this whole thing is common sense, and my motivation to vote against this is to actually have a more robust discussion, rather than having something like this be put together at Town Meeting, very emotional. I do not want to be looked at as a non-humanitarian. I appreciate Ms. Cavaco saying we should be leaders. That is true. We should be leaders to show that we can take a tough subject, and I don't think this is going to go away. And the last thing is, it actually is tax money. Every time you pay your taxes, you look at that CPA, that is being counted as a percentage of your property. So it is tax money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Everett Malaguti, followed by Lori Downs. Everett Malaguti.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct 2. And before I get into my thing, I do want to say that I do support the actual efforts of the Coalition. I've been a person that has supported them in the past and continue from where I work as well, too. But as a Town Meeting member and representing multiple people in multiple different aspects, I am looking at this as a financial interest. While I was at the caucus looking at All-Stars' location, I still am, but I'm putting that on the back burner because of other issues. The financial aspect, though, as Mr. Lynch brought up, I asked during the actual caucus, is while we cannot guarantee anything that it will be just Plymouth residents or that Plymouth residents will be in there, since we are looking at this as not just a local but a regional, I asked if there would be other communities that could pony up money for this as well, too, there are CPCs or other avenues. The answer was no. Also, the other question that was, and the answer that was brought up at the caucus was whether or not the funding does get approved today, the effort is, will still go forward since they do own the building. So mine is purely financial, and I'm voting no on this article, only because I believe in my aspect from people that I have talked to, constituents and not, that it should be more of a regional effort of contributing funds instead of one sole community. Thank you.
Yes, Lori Down, Precinct 17. Peter Nell, Precinct 10. Welcome, Lori Down.
At one of the caucuses, the question was asked, they already purchased the building, and what will they do if they don't receive the CPC funding? And I believe it was stated that they would find funding sources elsewhere. So I had looked at the financial point of view in terms of the impact on the schools and such, but I've come to the, I don't know if my conclusion is correct, but if they don't get the CPC funding, they're still going to find funding, and it's still going to exist. schools and such, but I've come to the, I don't, I don't know if my conclusion is correct, but if they don't get the CPC funding, they're still going to find funding and it's still going to exist. So if we're looking to stop them by not voting for the CPC funding, that is not a good reason. Um, I think we should vote for this. I would like to give them an opportunity to explain that though. Thank you.
Anyone care to respond? Suzanne Jovanetti, Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless, responding.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Um, yes, we're, we're very committed to seeing this become a reality. If this does not go through, we'll have to gather together with Emily and, and the rest of our advisors and, uh, development team and really rethink it. What it will guarantee is that it will take longer to open. There'll be no question, it'll take us longer to try and come up with that funding and there'll be a delay in how soon we'd be able to offer, uh, the services to Plymouth families and homeless families and children. Does that help?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Peter Neville, Precinct 10. Russell Shirley, Housing Authority. Mr. Neville.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Peter Neville, Precinct 10. Um, homeless, homeless families. It strikes me that if there is a, there is no pure definition of affordable housing than a homeless family. We're not, you know, cutting and dicing against how many market-grade apartments and, uh, we're going to, we're going to have senior housing or assisted housing. We'll get into that later on, on how the CPC is going to provide funding for other projects. This is homeless families. That's affordable. That's what affordable funding is for. It's a straight line, it's the purest use of our CPA, CP funding that we, that I have seen. So thank you for bringing it forward. I'm voting for it.
Russell Shirley is the Chair of the Plymouth Housing Authority. Nancy Davis, Precinct 2. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Steve. Um, I'm the chairman, as you said, of the Plymouth Housing Authority. We had our meeting this morning and, uh, this is sorely needed. Uh, we have so many people that need support both in Plymouth housing and looking for Plymouth housing and I, uh, would appreciate your support on this article. It amazes me, I work at the Coalition, I work at the food pantry at the Coalition. It amazes me how many people from Plymouth come to that, uh, food pantry requiring food. I ask that you reach down, think about those people and support this article.
Nancy Davis, Precinct 2, followed by Timothy Lawler, Advisory and Finance. Nancy Davis, Precinct 2.
Hi, um, one of the duties I feel like we have is to look at things from a non-emotional standpoint and try to be, um, logical. And one of the things that I heard, or several of them at the meeting caucus we had was there were severe drainage issues and wetlands on this property, which kind of infringes on the amount of outdoor space that can be used. There'd be a playground in the front of the yard and it's a very busy road, um, there's minimal parking, like twenty-six or twenty-eight spots for just twenty-odd families and then people that work there, so that's a little bit odd to me. Um, you can have overflow, plus there's, um, busy stuff going on next door with the RMV, um, and to take away the emotional side of it, the state's going to be making the decision of who lives there, not the town and not people you know and it's not going to be, you know, favoritism, whatever, but the state will make the decision and, um, granted, we could be like setting the stage or whatever, but I don't think this is the place to do it and, um, I'm sorry to say, I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. And before I go to Mr. Lawler, I see another town meeting member up there. Are you making a motion or do you care to be heard? Town meeting member.
Heard.
You want to be heard, okay. We'll go to Mr. Lawler first, I recognize him, followed by, I think that's Ronald Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tim Lawler, I live at 60 Rocky Hill Road. I am a concerned Plymouth resident and taxpayer of 35 years. I'm currently a member of FinCom. This presentation contains my own opinion and personal viewpoint. Let me tell you about an agency in Boston called EOHLC, Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities. They are a $4 billion agency. This agency was created in nineteen, uh, sorry, 2000, 2023, just last year, in response to Governor Healey's declaration of a state of emergency in Massachusetts because of a massive influx of homeless families entering our right-to-shelter state. The puzzle, the Plymouth Coalition for Homeless operates its programs under EOHLC, a $4 billion agency. They are one and the same. Here's the issue. Here is the issue. A $4 billion agency is asking Plymouth residents to fund a mutual venture that does not guarantee that one homeless Plymouth family will be occupying this facility. And because of this, some bureaucratic at EOHLC will exclusively determine what families occupy this facility. That's right, a $4 billion agency who gets their monies from the reduction of state aid program, programs throughout Massachusetts and especially Plymouth. We're already paying the state to fund this state of emergency. Where do you think this $4 billion came from? Us at the state level. There's another piece of the puzzle and the surprise that they're not telling you about. It's going to cost Plymouth another million dollars to educate these non-Plymouth homeless families. No matter how they spend the numbers.
Thirty seconds.
State mandates, et cetera, their children will end up in our schools. That has a deficit in spending now. You heard the school committee chairperson, Michelle Badger, told you yesterday that Plymouth schools are returning to this town for a big request for more monies next time we may, meet. Don't forget that. One million dollars more added to your taxes. Let EOHLC fund this venture, not Plymouth residents. Spending $3 million for the program that does not serve Plymouth's homeless problem does not make sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Vincent Grillo, Precinct 8, moves to close debate. I have to take that first. It's a motion to close debate. I see that I have a couple of speakers at the back of the room. I have two people who want to respond. I have one person in the queue as well as another person who wants to close debate. So, uh, that's who we have and at this time, town meeting members, uh, when the light goes on, you can determine whether to close debates, a two-thirds vote. When the light goes on, you can begin. You can vote now. You're voting as to whether to close debate on Article 16A and it's a motion for affordable housing, the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless. And we are in our evening session, uh, our second day of Plymouth's annual town meeting. This is coming to you live at Plymouth North High School. We're in the Center for Performing Arts located on Aubrey Street. We are continuing through the warrant, we are beginning with Article 16A and the light has gone off. We'll now see the totals as to whether or not town meeting wishes to continue to debate or whether town meeting will be eighty-five say yes, forty-eight says no. It does not pass. We'll go to Suzanne Jovanetti to respond to the previous speaker, followed by Michelle Badger in response to the previous speaker. Welcome.
Uh, just a quick clarification, EOHLC was just renamed by the new governor. It, it was formerly the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, so that, that is a false statement and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Badger is the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee. Uh, welcome, Michelle Badger.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to clarify a few things and I, I'm not sure if maybe I fully understood your statement, but there's no way we can guarantee that it will be 915,000 or a million, whatever number that we have that will impact the schools. Uh, as Sue stated earlier, not all of the students or the children that will be there will be school-aged, so I think that's important to remember. Um, we've also, you know, we've seen Oasis come in and we have almost seen a negligible impact on our schools. So I know that was a concern from a lot of people that, you know, adding Oasis in was going to be a, a large number of students in our schools and it has not. Um, and I think there was another statement about, um, um, faculty or our students, I should, I mean, um, uh, teachers. It's not necessarily either that we will have, need to add teachers, we won't need, it just depends on the impact on the schools. And again, can't be really clear until we know the numbers of students, but it, I don't think it will have that kind of impact and I'm happy to answer more questions about kind of our process. We went through the redistricting process not that long ago, so we have the space in different buildings, so it shouldn't have the impact that I, I think was, um, just talked about. So thank you.
Thank you. Going back to the town meeting members now, let's come back. Is that Mr. Riley in the back? Ronald Riley, followed by the town meeting member in the front.
Ron Riley, Precinct 13. Thank you. Uh, question for Bill Cohen. The, he mentioned, uh, about a deed restriction. Is this property, it's in an industrial park, will this be limited to what it will be served as, uh, from this point on? Could it ever go back to an industrial commercial building? What are the limits?
Well, the deed restriction, which is for 30 years, travels with the property who owns the property. Uh, the other thing is that you have the Dover Amendment and you have to, uh, be able to, uh, utilize the educational op, uh, the, the educational aspect of this property will have to be in use, but you lose the Dover Amendment. So these things are fail-safe measures to make sure the building can stay consistent as an affordable housing unit, complex, temporary emergency shelter with an educational component.
As long as they are running it and own it or next owner needs to run it that way?
They have to run it the same way or they can't utilize the property. So these things travel with the, uh, with the deed, uh, they travel with the deed and the zone.
Building stays this way forever?
Uh, yes, you could remove it if you wanted to, but you'd, there'd be a process of doing that, that would be quite complicated.
Thank you. Front.
Alexis Kuhn, Precinct 17. I just wanted to say that I keep hearing from people that there's no guarantee that Plymouth residents will be housed in this facility. However, our Plymouth residents are homeless no matter where they go. If we're sending them to other towns to be housed, are we suggesting that we then pay those towns like you've suggested that other towns pay us? Regardless of where it goes, we have to house our Plymouth residents. They're homeless regardless. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're going to now continue with, uh, do we have that in the response from the town meeting member? Yeah, okay. We're not sure if we have a procedural motion. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Mr. Hartman, uh, during Mr. Cohen's last answer, I saw you raise and shake your head. Could you please address that? So we would have to see Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development.
Welcome, Director of Planning and Development.
Good evening. Uh, so we would have to look at how the restriction was actually worded, but I don't believe that would be the case. I think the restriction would apply to the use and if somebody wanted to take this over for the same residential type use, the restriction would, would apply. But if the use ceased to operate there, I think that restriction would be lifted and it would be available for any kind of commercial or industrial use.
Thank you. That was David Golden, Precinct 7. Going to bring back in Mark Posenelli, he's Precinct 1. Uh, we'll continue with the town meeting members. Mr. Posenelli, uh, welcome once again back to Plymouth Town Meeting. Mark.
Hi, Mark Posenelli, Precinct 1. I know I already spoke, so I'll be brief. Um, I, I've heard many people say we should take the emotion out of this and just look at it from a financial matter. Now, I don't believe that's correct. The very basic duty of government is to support and protect its, its people, um, and I think doing something like this is a, uh, good step in that direction. But if you want to look at it from the financial side, I just ask people to consider this. This is $3 million that's sitting in CPC funding that can only be used for purposes allowed by CPC. If we don't spend it on this purpose, i- it's going to go to something else that's allowed by CPC purposes like, uh, a playground reconstruction or open space or conservation land. It's not going to be returned to the taxpayers of Plymouth. It's not going to save the taxpayers any money. Um, I think this is a very good use of this funding and I would, uh, hope other people can support it. Thank you.
Lynn Vaz, Precinct 1.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Uh, $3 million from the CPC fund is fine and, uh, I, I'm very supportive of the homeless, but nobody has come out and saying how much it's going to cost to renovate this building. I'm, I'm bet you it's going to be more than what the CPC fund is coming up with.
Anyone care to respond to Mr. Vaz regarding the cost of renovating? So we have a consultant with us, Emily Rothschild. If there's no objection from town meeting, she is not a resident, uh, she's going to respond on behalf of the Coalition for the Homeless.
Hi, Emily Rothschild. I'm, uh, consultant to Plymouth Coalition for the Homeless. Um, the project is proposed currently at about $7 million and, uh, we have applied to the state for $4 million of that. Uh, we have an application pending with them in order to, uh, promote those funds and to encourage the state to fund it, we are asked to go to the local community for a match. Uh, construction costs on the project are, uh, about 4.2 million, um, plus acquisition plus soft costs. Um, so hopefully that, that helps answer that.
Thank you. Going to continue if, if town meeting member? Yes, please go forward.
Hi, I'm into Siri, Precinct 4.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to mention, I know there's been a lot of talk about who will be in this building and as a teacher in the system, I work in this building actually, I've provided, I run a clothing closet and I provided clothes to a number of families and students who are currently homeless or near homelessness in this building. And the need is there, it's our community, yes, other communities will be helped as well, but I just wanted to point that out as a teacher in the system, as part of this community, it's important and I support this.
Thank you. Going to continue, uh, with Alan Zanotti. Mr. Zanotti is a Plymouth resident, welcome, Mr. Zanotti.
Thank you. Alan Zanotti, a lifelong resident of Plymouth and I've been on the board of the Plymouth Industrial Park Association since the early 1980s. As you've heard, residential zone, uh, residential is not allowed in this zoning, however, uh, the state overrides, uh, that here in Plymouth with the Dover Amendment, um, but it's supposed to be primarily education. This is a shelter with an educational component. A day educational program only would be a fine fit for this building. You've heard so much about the state makes the decision and they draw within 20 miles, so that could be towns like Abington, Taunton, Norwell, Porcassett and many more, homeless people. With 26 families, uh, we are concerned how many will come into Plymouth and need to be educated from other communities. Plymouth, since 2019, has gone from 120 to 412 non-English speaking students requiring 12 specialized teachers for language. We know the Coalition is involved with the Baymont Hotel where there are 96 families in that 107-room motel. Uh, based on the Coalition's 13 families at their Kingston Bishop's Highway location, we can expect to send an emergency response team every four days. And I have the report from the town of Kingston here and it is totally incorrect that they were responding to fire as part of the 132 responses for those 13 families there. Um, the Coalition bought this very high-end building needing $5.5 million for it. They're looking for $3 million and they're still going to need another $2.5 million. Um, this broad building will probably end up, uh, being tax exempt. Uh, and it's a four-story building, they have to add an elevator, a one or two-story building would have made a lot more sense. With 26 families, probably 100 people, this less than an acre and a half lot is totally inadequate after deducting the building, the parking, and it's hugely impacted by wetlands because it receives the drainage not only for their, from their lot, but the abutting lot that was part of this property. And when the Coalition indicated that was not the case, then I showed them this report from their own environmental people on the extent of wetlands on that property. Perhaps with the spring rain, they're now seeing that because they've mentioned recently they're going to put the playground on the front lawn of this property and this.
Thirty seconds.
Um, you know, if you vote no for this, Plymouth is still going to be participating financially in many aspects of this with schools and emergency responses and, uh, tax exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at the back, identify yourself.
Hi, um, my name's Judith Collins and I'm in Precinct 4.
Excuse me, are you a Plymouth resident?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Please proceed.
First, I'd like to say that mostly, uh, what I'm hearing from the representative seems to be quite emotional versus, um, representing. to be quite emotional versus representing, or stating, or convincing me that they're representing what the people they're representing. They don't seem to appear to be saying, "The people I represent want this." I just wanna throw that in. I have my rest written down. I urgently request the town of Plymouth representatives vote to defer any actions to move forward on the content of Article sixteen A. Deferring the proposal for a respectful study would allow Plymouth residents the opportunity to get a clear, detailed understanding of ongoing financial impacts over and above the three-million-dollar initial investment the proposed facility may create for the town of Plymouth. Much like the Article nine airport runway extension that was voted nay, the town, as well as the proponents, owe a duty to the town residents, a concise understanding of the positive and the negative consequences of sixteen A proposal to create a six-twenty-six unit family shelter facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Woman in the back, please identify yourself.
Ida Parker, precinct seven. And unlike my dad, Randy, I don't like public speaking, so bear with me, everybody.
Welcome.
I do feel strongly about this. I am gonna vote yes. I urge everybody to really consider it and what we're doing. I'm a licensed mental health clinician. I work in Plymouth. I work in Plymouth County. I work in a lot of places, and as a licensed mental health clinician, I work mostly with children and families. I also worked for Independence House down on Cape that dealt with domestic violence, and I work a lot with DTA. And there is such a lack of housing for these families, and it could be you, it could be any of us at any given time, and are we really gonna say no to supporting this and not give these people a place to go? And I know we're saying, "Don't come from an emotional place, come from a financial place," and I understand that. I'm a taxpayer here, too, and I may not always be able to live here because the taxes are increasing. But if we always say no to things because we're just thinking about ourselves, and we're just thinking about what that's going to do to us and our individual taxes, then like, what is this society and community coming to? Right? What are we doing for other people who live in these communities? Because we're not just here to service the people of Plymouth. I understand that as town meeting members, that is our initial obligation. However, if the Kingston area homeless shelter didn't exist, then nobody would have anywhere to go there either. So, I just urge everybody to really think about supporting each other and supporting people who are not maybe as privileged as most of us are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ida Parker, precinct seven, town meeting member. We're debating Article sixteen A, which is the motion for affordable housing, Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless. Again, a reminder, we like to reserve the center section and this section over here for town meeting members. We do have the Advisory and Finance Committee, and then the public, we invite to sit in the back of the room. In addition, we encourage town meeting members to also come down and sit in these areas. Any further discussion on Article sixteen A before we move forward with the vote? Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak or be heard? If not, we're gonna close the debate, and we're gonna go ahead and vote. It's a two-thirds vote. When the light goes on, you're gonna be voting on Article sixteen A. We're supported here by OTI Technologies. They're gonna control when the light goes on. You'll have twenty seconds in which to vote, and then we'll scroll through the precincts. You can vote now. Town meeting members are voting on whether or not to approve Article sixteen A. It's a two-thirds vote. It's a roll-call vote. You'll have the opportunity afterwards to see how your representatives voted in connection with this particular matter. Again, Article sixteen A, Affordable Housing Plymouth Area for the Coalition of the Homeless. Following the vote, we'll continue with Article sixteen B. Voting has ended. Town meeting will now see what the totals are. Ninety-eight in favor, thirty-six in opposition, three abstentions. The motion carries. You'll see, as we go through the precincts, the quantum of vote was more than two-thirds. And while we look at the way in which people voted, we'll read into the record Article sixteen B. Motion for Affordable Housing, one thirty-two Court Street. Mr. Neerman moves the town appropriate sum of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars to pay cost of constructing six affordable units. Stephen Neerman is the chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Neerman.
All right, you guys cut me off already. I haven't even spoken. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by a vote of twelve in favor, one against, and zero abstentions. To town meeting, approve Article sixteen B. Approval of this article will authorize a grant to Margreco, Inc., for the purpose of constructing six affordable deed-restricted units at one thirty-two Court Street.
Further discussion on Article sixteen B, I see rising to the occasion. Welcome, Michael Bobini.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Bobini, precinct three. I'm having a difficult time of supporting this article. I've compared this article to the next article, and I think that it, what we have to understand is, what do we get the best bang for the buck for the town of Plymouth? And in this article, we're getting six units at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per unit. In the next article, we're getting a total of sixty-two units, that's sixty-four thousand five hundred a unit. So, it's two and a half times the cost of the next article for this particular article. And I think that the reason for that is because the Red Brook-Grantham article is using state, federal, local, developer. There are many people chipping in to make this happen, and this is to the advantage of this town, because instead of us carrying the burden, we're sharing the burden with other agencies. You know, at this point, the six units that are proposed out here in Court Street are basically, they'll be requiring for rent at affordable, about two thousand dollars a unit. That's based on area median income. They aren't offering anything other than the eighty percent. The Grantham Group is offering nineteen units at eighty percent, thirty units at sixty percent, which is fourteen hundred dollars a month, and thirteen units at thirty percent, which is seven hundred and twenty dollars per month. These are real, some of these are really affordable units. I really think that the town should make every effort to work with developers such as this, such as Grantham, to come up with a model which works very well, and will save the town a lot of money, and we won't be spending money, which I think is foolish, when we're spending this kind of money for six units, a hundred ninety thousand dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a unit. So, I urge you in this particular article to vote no. And I would encourage, again, that the CPC focus on models that we've used with Grantham that will provide many more houses, many affordable houses. And it makes a lot more sense than I think.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael Bobini. William Cohen is the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. He'll be making the presentation. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Bill Cohen, I'd like to present on Article sixteen B, if we can put that up. Okay, here we go. I'm gonna jump through that. Okay, Article sixteen B. The Community Preservation Committee, as Mr. Bobini was indicating, is recommending to town meeting nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars to acquire deed restriction on six affordable units in a complex on Court Street. This model that we've been using, we've been using with private developers around Plymouth. We've used this model at State Road, where we deed restricted twenty-six units a few years back. Also, we use this model in West Plymouth to deed restrict units out on Carver Road. So, this is a model that we've been using. It's a very straightforward model. We're looking at deed restricting the units. In the end, the owner of the property will have to maintain the property, they'll have to take care of the property. They're in ownership of the property. They carry those costs. We just get the deed restriction on the unit. It's an efficient way of creating affordable units throughout the town of Plymouth, buying deed restrictions down existing deed restrictions. This complex is going to be a complex of nearly forty units. Under inclusionary zoning, they built forty units. They were required to build four affordable, which they are going to do. They offered in their application to the CPC a restriction on six of these units. I touch on this matter because I'm gonna go back to this thing, the subsidized housing inventory. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts is keeping a number there, and what we're getting for this is forty-unit count on the complex. We're deed restricting our six. There's four that's already there. There'll be ten affordable units, but we're not just getting credit for the ten units at this location. We're getting credit with the subsidized housing inventory, with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, a count of nearly forty units. That goes towards getting that number from six point nine and higher. Now, this is the building that they're proposing at the location. This is gonna be right on Court Street. It carries an architectural style that is very similar to what we saw at this end of Court Street for many years. The Davis property, which became Pack Television, was taken down last year, and this is where this site is located, on Court Street. This is a view inside these units. They're one-bedroom units. They're about nine hundred square feet, very efficient. Again, the architectural style of the building is keeping within the style of the neighborhood as you come up Court Street from downtown Plymouth heading to North Plymouth. Again, as I said before, I think this is a model that we have to be open to working with developers to find opportunities to deed restrict units. Sometimes we're in an opportunity where we can have a number of units based on the funding mechanism. Here, we're working with a local developer who's doing renewal of our downtown, and this is an opportunity to deed restrict the units. So, I do hope that you support Article sixteen B. Thank you.
This is, again, a majority vote, and we're gonna continue with the discussion. And first, speaker right here.
Christine Gudano, I'm precinct nine. I just have a question. How much money do we have in the CPC fund? They're asking for close to eight million dollars, but we have no idea how much money...
Can you speak right into the microphone?
How much money is in the CPC fund?
Lynn Barrett is the Director of Finance.
How much do we raise per year to replenish this fund?
Thank you.
So, in your, in the Advisory and Finance Committee's budget book, and then also in the CPC budget book, there is a budget in there of how much revenue is raised every year in the Community Preservation Fund, and it represents approximately four million dollars is raised. And then, in, on page one twenty-one of that CPC recommendation, there is a recommendation of a funding source for each and every article. So, we have some existing debt for some previous projects that town meeting voted for. So, of that four million dollars, we're using some of it to do the current projects, but then also, that revenue is also gonna be used to pay down on debt of previous projects that are already, that are already being constructed. For example, Stevens Field, Pilgrim Hall Museum, which you voted on last fall. So, currently, right now, in the fund, we have a housing reserve of six hundred and fifty-six thousand eight thirty-one. That's on page one twenty. And then there is undesignated fund balance of one point three million. So, those are funding sources that are also used to pay down debt or to fund these projects. So, this particular project, sixteen B, for the Court Street project, a portion, the nine hundred and sixty is being paid for out of ten percent of the annual revenues that we're raising of the four million, plus about five hundred and sixty-eight thousand of the housing reserve.
Thank you. Ken Stone, welcome.
Thank you, Ken Stone, precinct sixteen. I agree with Mr. Brindisi. I don't think we're getting as much bang for our buck as I would like to get. I will be voting for sixteen C because I think that's a good deal. But I have a question for either Bill Cohen or Lee Hartman. As I understand it, yeah, we're six point nine percent toward our ten percent, but we're still about three thousand houses, units, to the number we would need. My question is, if we don't fund this almost a million dollars for these six units, as I understand it, we're building enough in the pipeline that we will probably hit the safe harbor anyhow, even if we don't have these six units. So, I don't see the advantage at this time to spending that kind of money. I hope my question is clear.
Our Director of Planning and Development is Lee Hartman. Welcome, Lee Hartman.
Thank you again. So, the state law says that if you have rental units, and twenty-five percent of those units are rental, and you have the deed restriction, all of the units here will count. So, we're talking about adding forty units to our subsidized housing list. Now, if you had called me this afternoon, I could give you an exact number, but I'm estimating we're about eight hundred and fifty units short of reaching our ten percent, where we would have the ability to say no to future forty Bs. So, this would take care of it. We'd be down to almost eight hundred units.
So, would, so this six units, just to answer my question, so that six units would go toward that?
No, all of the units.
Do we have to spend this money to get all the units?
Yeah, because the developer will not go forward with a project without the subsidy.
Just for those, okay.
Stephen Leiden, precinct seventeen, followed by Michael Bobini.
I have a question for Bill Cohen. Bill, could you explain why there's such a difference in cost in these units? Isn't it because the builder has to build the affordable units almost the same as the regular units, as far as, you know, the price of cabinets? All the amenities basically have to be the same. You know, it costs more money, I mean, he's paying more money, right, for the property and the development and the type of development on Court Street than they are down in Red Brook? So, isn't that why the difference in prices?
Go in. I think each builder confronts different costs based on the overall size of the project and the funding sources. He is the sole funder, and this is a project that he is working on, and he is going to build the building at his cost and then allow this deed restriction. You're correct, there are requirements that he has to meet when it comes to the difference between from one unit in the complex that's market to an affordable unit.
Thank you. Michael Bobini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me clarify, I'm not Mr. Brindisi. I'm Mike Bobini for precinct three.
Didn't I say Michael Bobini?
No, the previous speaker said it was Mr. Brindisi.
Michael Bobini.
We look a lot alike, I do. Want to stand up? I just wanna make it clear that, you know, there's a couple of issues here. One, we're looking for affordable housing. I don't consider two thousand dollars a month really affordable housing. Secondly, what we have, the difference here between this development and the one in Red Brook, is that in Red Brook, they are offering affordable housing for approximately, well, it is thirty units at fourteen hundred and thirteen units at seven hundred and twenty, okay, instead of two thousand. So, if the town is seriously looking for affordable housing, which I think we are, we all talk about it, we need affordable housing in the town of Plymouth. We're never gonna get to the eight hundred number they're talking about here. Believe me, every time we gain new building, the number goes up. Don't plan on ever getting there. So, the real issue here is, are we spending our money wisely? A hundred and sixty thousand dollars per unit for four units, I'm sorry, six units, to provide affordable housing? I think the answer is no. I think in Red Brook, yes, we are getting some affordable housing out of this, and I don't blame anybody. This is a situation where there's a model in place, like they're doing, Grantham does, where they're getting money from other sources that are able to do more houses, more affordable houses, and at lower rates. So, I really believe we should not vote for this article. Thank you.
Michael Bobini, this is a majority vote. Catherine Holmes.
I just have a quick question. I think Mr. Bobini's points are valid. I have a friend who's living in the Pine Hills Apartments right now, and he currently pays twenty-four hundred dollars a month. So, Mr. Cohen, can you speak to the two thousand dollars and how they came to that amount, please?
William Cohen, Chair of Community Preservation Committee.
So, I believe he's referring to the AMI, the area mean, yep, the AMI. So, the AMI, the area mean income, is at eighty percent at these units. Again, going back to the strategy of the committee, trying to look at different opportunities going after different demographics. Later on, earlier we were talking about emergency housing. The AMI doesn't exist there, but later on, in the next article, we'll be talking about AMI lower than eighty, sixty, and thirty, and eighty. So, they usually are a combination based on different demographics that are out looking. This is more suited for individuals that are working, that are not retired, that are looking for housing that's affordable. There are people that are working forty, sixty, seventy hours a week. They have student... They have student loans, they're looking for their first place to live, and this is a place that's designed around their qualifications.
Thank you. Unless one of you wants to make a motion, I'm going to go with Carl Mason first, Precinct eighteen, followed by George Brown, Precinct seven. Mr. Mason.
Carl Mason, Precinct eighteen. Just to clarify one more time, these are forty, these units, we get credit for forty units, even though ten of them are in fact affordable.
Yes. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, they keep that inventory, and they determine who qualifies. And they look, they try to incentivize towns to do things like this, apartment buildings for a different demographic. So this is kind of an incentivization. They say, build the apartment building. If you have a certain amount of these affordable, we'll give you credit on the SHI at forty. So there's a great benefit where we're only deed restricting six, and we're picking up forty units, because the previous article, we didn't pick up those twenty-six. So there's a benefit financially on both ends in terms of the impact that we're having towards getting that six point nine moving in the right direction. And Mr. Babini is right, we're not going to achieve ten percent anytime soon, but if we work towards it and we have our housing plan in order, we can experience at different times safe harbors against forty Bs.
I would point out, we're getting forty units for one million dollars roughly, whereas at Redbrook, we're getting sixty-two for four million dollars. So I think this might be the better deal, actually.
George Brown, Precinct seven.
I think I will kind of go along with the last speaker. We get a big bang for this, not because we're paying so much per unit for only six units. We are getting forty units credit for paying for six units. I think this is a worthwhile objective for the town. I'm proposing we all vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the deed restriction and the affordable units are six units. The state lets us take credit for these because they're rental for their list of getting to our ten percent. So they're two different things here. We're only getting four units, not only. We're getting four units through this. The six and the forty units, forty units total, is counting towards our credit for the ten percent that the state demands we have. So two totally different things.
Unless I have a motion, I'm going to continue with the speakers. Joseph Hutchison, Precinct seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Question, how many credits will the Redbrook project provide for the inventory?
So I think, I'm assuming, Mr. Hutchison, you're going to tie, you're going to tie it into this?
Yeah. Well, I had thought that Mr. Babini had talked about Redbrook versus, versus the...
I'm going to allow the question. Go ahead.
You allowed it?
Yes.
Sixty-two affordable units and sixty-two to count towards our list.
Okay, thanks.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Move the question.
That's really a motion to move the question, but thank you. Mr. Hanlon, Michael Hanlon, moves to close debate. So we have no one in the queue. We have two people who have risen to speak, and at this time, you're going to vote as to whether to close debate. It's not debatable. Two-thirds vote. You can vote now. You're voting on whether to close debate. And while you're voting, just to let you know, we will be recessing no later than eight o'clock, as required, two hours from our charter. And I propose that we recess on Saturday. We did fifteen minutes in the morning. I don't think we'll go eight hours tonight, so I'm going to split it in the middle, seven and a half minutes on the recess. So you're voting right now with a closed debate. You voted. Now we're going to see whether or not two-thirds of the members have wanted to, yes, one nineteen say yes, eighteen say no, zero abstentions, and we're going to roll through the precincts quickly. We have more than two-thirds saying debate is over, so we're going to be voting on Article sixteen B, and thereafter, we'll be taking a seven and a half minute recess. So Town Meeting can now get ready to vote when the light goes on. You're voting now on the main motion under sixteen B. When the light goes on, this is Plymouth Town Meeting, it's coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. Town Meeting is voting once again. They are voting on Article sixteen B, and thereafter, we'll begin our first recess of the evening. Town Meeting members have been here for just about two hours as we continue to move through the warrant. Town Meeting members are voting in person as well as remotely. We have the support of OTI Technologies. This is going to be a majority vote on this one, and the majority vote is one oh two say yes, thirty-four say no, one abstention. Town Meeting is in recess at seven fifty-five P M. It is eight oh four P M., and we're going to resume this session of Town Meeting. At this time, before we begin, I just want to mention that we'd like to recognize the local scene, which is cable casting this Town Meeting live on Comcast nine and Verizon forty-seven, the local scene's streaming channel on YouTube. We'd like to give thanks to David Antoine, Erica Christensen, Dustin Fleming, Keith Hughes, Aaron Matinzi, Melissa Matinzi, David Maybrook, Christopher Quinn, and Dan Snyder. This facility has been provided by the Plymouth School District for our use today, and we'd like to thank Dr. Christopher Campbell for his support in the organization of this event. In addition, thank you to Alan McLean. He is the IT Director, who is providing the audiovisual equipment for this session of Town Meeting, and Performing Arts Center Manager Seth Sprague. We also thank Judy Kendall and Jill Daven for the behind-the-scenes organization of the event, and we thank the custodial team and the entire custodial staff of Plymouth North High School for the setup and cleaning, including Head Custodian Sean Murray O'Brine, Alan John Carter, David Hallinan, and Jim Gavoni. And once again, as we mentioned earlier, Plymouth Hometown Cleanup is May seventeenth and eighteenth. And at this time, we're going to continue in the warrant. We are in Article sixteen, and the motion before you, Article sixteen C, affordable housing, Cranberry Commons at Redbrook. Mr. Neerman moves the town appropriates sum of four million dollars to pay costs of constructing sixty-two units in a multifamily complex building with a deed-restricted affordable housing on property located at Cranberry Commons at Redbrook. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and welcome everybody back from recess. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that Town Meeting approve Article sixteen C. Approval of this article will grant four million dollars to the Grantham Group for the purposes of constructing sixty-two units in a multifamily complex building for local senior citizens. So if you would allow me just a moment to kind of place this in context with our committee, when we see articles, we see them from January through March. So in this case, we saw this article in mid-January, and it was just a couple of days after there was a proposed change of location for this building. And the residents were, to put it lightly, bluntly, they were really pissed off, and we felt that it was kind of a rush to vote on this and move this forward without vetting out this issue. So we unanimously rejected it, and Grantham came back on reconsideration. They sweetened the pot by an extra ten units. They added more parking. The residents were all, I can't say all, but the residents were fully aware of what was happening. They had a lot of input, and we felt like we made a good decision here to unanimously approve this. So I just wanted you all to know that, you know, we, when we see some of these articles, it's early in the process, and not all the information that you have today is out there, so we have to do our best efforts, but I think we did a good job by rejecting it initially.
Thank you. And now we're going to begin with a presentation from the Community Preservation Committee. So once again, welcome back, William Cohen. He's Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Also, we may be hearing from the Grantham Group. Walter Ohanian is not a resident. If there's no objection, Mr. Ohanian will be available to speak and answer questions. If there's anyone else who's going to be speaking on this article and would like to come down in the seats on my left, you're welcome to do that. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to, the Community Preservation Committee is recommending Article sixteen C, which is an affordable housing request for four million dollars, and this is to create sixty-two deed-restricted units for people sixty-two and older. The location is at Redbrook, which is in southern Plymouth. It's an area that we haven't committed CPA funds for affordable housing. This is a growing part of Plymouth that we need to pay attention to as the demand is increased in this area as it grows. The other thing that's very important to note on this article is that we've been talking today about subsidized housing inventory, the SHI count. All sixty-two will count towards that. We also talk about the area-wide mean income. And it's important to note that the area mean income on this project is truly affordable, deeply affordable. We're looking at nearly thirteen of the units will be deeded thirty percent, thirty percent area-wide mean income. That means if you make thirty-two thousand dollars a year, you could qualify for this, and you'd be paying around eight hundred dollars in rent. The same thing with the sixty percent. They're going to be offering these buildings, not at eighty, but at sixty percent area-wide mean income, nearly thirty units. That means you'd be making around sixty-four thousand dollars a year. You would qualify for this unit, and it'd cost about sixteen hundred dollars a month. Now we're looking at the eighty. There is nineteen units that are going to be deemed affordable at eighty percent area-wide mean income. That's an amount of money you have to make to qualify, around eighty-nine thousand dollars a unit, and those units cost about twenty-two hundred dollars. So you can see that we are addressing this issue that members of Town Meeting have brought up today about addressing true affordability, and this is what we're doing at this location. I have here today the, Dan Gorsika with Redbrook. He is going to walk you through this process. I also have Walter Ohanian, and he's here from Grantham Group to walk you through the process. One of the other things I want to point out about the Grantham Group is that they have an expertise in going and looking at state and federal grant opportunities and funding mechanisms and tax credits. They'll be raising an additional twenty-five million dollars to help with this project. We often look at situations where we can use CPA funds to leverage other funds to get them here to Plymouth so that we can address these housing needs. If we don't go after that twenty-five million dollars in grants out there, it's going to go to another town to address affordable housing. So this organization has an expertise on that level that the committee was impressed by. As the Chairman of the Finance Committee has indicated, there were some concerns initially on the article that was going before the boards and committees. And if you look on page seventy-four of your CPA handout, there's a very important memo there from the Redbrook outlining the changes that they were going to make to accommodate the concerns that committees and boards had relevant to this application. But I would like to, at this time, introduce Dan Gorsika from Redbrook.
Welcome, Daniel Gorsika.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Gorsika, a lifelong resident and taxpayer of Plymouth, rarely with my wife and four children. I'm also the Vice President of Redbrook in South Plymouth in Eighty Makepeace Community. We are here tonight to present a unique partnership opportunity called Article sixteen C. Over the years, I've been a huge proponent of public and private partnerships. Article sixteen C is just that, utilizing private lands, funds, state funds, and town CPA funds to create an opportunity for those in need of our help. This article, we create affordable housing in Plymouth for our seniors. Redbrook received a permit back in two thousand and eight. That special permit was also a partnership between Redbrook and the town. That partnership has created higher-density community and a smaller footprint, preventing sprawl, over seventeen hundred acres of land in permanent conservation restriction with more to come. It includes private roads, private water, private wastewater facilities, all of which are not the responsibility of the towns. It includes the reconstruction of various traffic intersections in South Plymouth, a growing residential tax base, a small and upcoming commercial tax base, and a place of employment for many. Redbrook has created another village in Plymouth for people of various demographics to call their home, and with your support, Article sixteen will do the same for our seniors in need. Article sixteen C will help us provide sixty-two deeply affordable units in perpetuity for the less fortunate seniors. This will help our seniors age in place to be part of a new village while maintaining a sense of community with dignity. This article creates sixty-two one-bedroom units, income-restricted senior housing for ages sixty-two and above. All units are deed-restricted, eligible for the town's subsidized housing inventory, and will remain that way in perpetuity. When requested by the Select Board, the initial lease-up will provide a seventy percent local preference. When creating affordable housing, the requirement is eighty percent area median income, AMI. The lower AMI means lower income requirements and lower rents. This project creates deep affordability with most of the units at or below sixty percent AMI. Article sixteen C will create nineteen units at or below eighty percent AMI, thirty units at or below sixty, and thirteen units at or below thirty percent. And as Bill noted, an income of a one-person household at thirty percent AMI is approximately thirty-two thousand dollars a year. That's a senior living on a small income such as social security. The project was introduced back in November of twenty-three. Initially, there were concerns related to the building location and parking. After a variety of meetings, including with the Redbrook Community, CPC, Planning Board, Select Board, and Advisory and Finance Committee, changes were made addressing those concerns. The outcome created a stronger article, and for that, I say thank you for those who participated. The building was relocated, way-oriented to alleviate neighbors' concerns about their views. The project is adjacent now, adjacent to the Redbrook Apartments, matching architectural style, elements, and scale. Parking was addressed. The unit increased, was increased by ten, all ten above any prior commitment, and all changes were made with no additional requests from the town. Article sixteen C has received a majority and/or unanimous support from the CPC, our Select Board, our Planning Board, and our Advisory and Finance Committee. We also presented this to the senior task force, and they were delighted to see such an opportunity. This is an illustrative rendering, just showing the site plan. It's located at the northeast corner of Riverrun and Wareham Road. As I noted, it's adjacent to the Redbrook Apartments. As part of this article, the Eighty Makepeace Company will donate the land and provide initial site work and utility connections to strengthen the project's viability. These next few slides are just some imagery of the building, which I'll just pause for a second or two on each one. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Walter Ohanian, the Managing Director of the Grantham Group, to rock you through a few other details.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll hear from Walter Ohanian from the Grantham Group. Mr. Ohanian, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. My name is Walter Ohanian, and I am the Managing Director for the Grantham Group. I appreciate you allowing me to discuss Cranberry Commons, a sixty-two-unit affordable housing community for seniors. Grantham Group is a Massachusetts-based developer and management agent to a number of affordable housing communities in Massachusetts. We have properties as far west as Northampton and Belcher Town, in central Mass with locations in Webster, Worcester, and Marlborough, and in southeastern Mass with communities in Attleboro, and our newest affordable housing community for senior in Situate, Mass. We have developed and currently manage over five hundred units in Massachusetts, all of which qualify to the state's forty-B subsidized housing inventory. to the state's 40B subsidized housing inventory. Being a mass-based company with over 25 years' experience in this arena, we gain strong relationships with various cities, towns, and government agencies. During the Baker Administration, we were recognized by the governor for our work in affordable housing. I know Dan reviewed some of the outside concept of the community, but I did want to take a few minutes just to review a few of the highlights of the interiors. Besides having the 62 one-bedroom units, we'll also have common areas for the residents to congregate. These include a living room with gas fireplace, a multipurpose room for residents to use for doing things such as doing a puzzle, enjoying a group meal, or coordinating a bingo game. The building will be built to the Energy Stretch Code and will be served by an elevator for residents to get from floor to floor. Having these common spaces, it will help residents facilitate socialization and be part of their own community within Cranberry Commons. The tremendous benefit this project location has is its access to the nearby Red Brook Village Center. It's a short, flat-area walk to the community gardens, the bakery, restaurants, the YMCA, physical therapy, and doctor's offices by Beth Israel. The 62 one-bedroom units will be approximately 690 square feet and will include everything a resident needs to live independently in the unit: a stove, dishwasher, refrigerator, washer, and dryer. And the units are designed with the understanding of the resident who'll be living in the unit. They will have easy step-in showers, ample-sized doorways for walkers and wheelchairs, and walk-in closets. The apartments will have large windows, making the units bright and cheerful. We are here today to ask town meeting members to approve $4 million of CPA funds towards this great project. Other funding sources include an in-kind contribution by 80 Makepeace for the land, making the land pad-ready, and also allowing us to tie into the existing utilities. In addition, the lion's share of the funding will actually come from state in the form of both federal and state low-income housing tax credits, home funds, and other state funding subsidies. In addition, the project will also take on conventional debt. The project cost is just under $30 million. You may ask, what is the $4 million in CPA funds actually doing for the project? It will be used towards the construction cost and allowing the project to take on less conventional debt. If you look at the graph on one side of the screen, you'll notice the total rents received by tenants if this were a market-rate project. The graph then shows various affordable options, and the gray area shows the amount of rent which would need to be made up to get to the market-rate rents. The graph with the star on it is Grantham's plan, and it shows units at 80, 60, and 30. And you'll notice this gray area is approximately $70,000 per month less in rents compared to that of a market-rate community. If we go to the next slide, it will show the yearly decrease in rents, which equates to $840,000 per year in reduced rents. And when I go on to this slide, you'll see the five-year savings residents receive is approximately $4.2 million. Again, the CPA funds we're requesting will go towards the cost of construction, allowing the project to offer units at a deeper level of affordability. Forty-three of the 62 units are dedicated to residents at or below 60% of the AMI, and 13 of these units will be at 30%. As I previously mentioned, we have a project in Situate, Mass, which falls under the same AMI as Plymouth. Our average resident who qualifies for these 30% units pays a rent of just under $400. You may wonder who the residents will move into this community? These are your neighbors, possibly people who have lived in Plymouth their entire life but can no longer afford to live in Plymouth for a variety of reasons. Possibly people who've had to give up their living arrangements long ago and might be living with their children. These may be your parents you're looking to bring closer to you so you can help with their needs during their golden years. But ultimately, these will be people who just don't have the financial resources to live in a community as beautiful as Plymouth and Red Brook without a reduced rent option. At a CPA cost of just under $65,000 per unit, to get a significant amount of deeply discounted units in perpetuity, I'm hoping you'll see the benefit of voting yes on Article 16C. Thank you.
Thank you. And does that complete the presentation? Because if it does, we're going to begin with Lawrence Peiser, Precinct 3. We're followed by Betsy Hall, Precinct 16. We're debating Article 16C. Welcome, Lawrence Peiser.
Thank you, Lawrence Peiser, Precinct 3. I think this is an excellent project. I have a problem with its location. If I were at 60 or 30% and had no automobile of my own, and by the description of these people, a fair percentage of them, there was an expectation earlier in the presentation before the parking was changed that a substantial number of the people would not have transportation. This is a wonderful place, very far away from facilities. Grocery stores, health is not adequate. My understanding is that the present health situation is that it's full. People are going to need to get transportation. If that's not answered, the town is providing money for an interesting concept that won't work. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy Hall, Precinct 16. Let's bring in Albert Donato, Precinct 17, as a panelist. Betsy Hall, welcome.
Yes, thank you. I do appreciate what a wonderful job people have done in presenting and pulling together this request. However, I think that when people keep saying that Makepeace is donating the land, I don't think that's really true. I think back in 2008, agreement was made that 80 Makepeace would provide land for a certain number of units. So I think they're sort of like donating that land twice, once in 2008, and then again now. And so that disturbs me that people are saying that. I think it's also not a great idea to limit this to people who are 62 and over so that older people are all segregated together in one spot. And I think that, in addition, when it says, well, 80 Makepeace is going to do the site planning, they agreed back in 2008 to do site planning for these units. So it's being, to me, kind of slick to say, oh, they're doing this, they're doing that. Actually, they agreed to do all of that in 2008. So if someone has a different viewpoint on that, I'd be glad to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have anybody responding to Betsy Hall, Precinct 16? We have Lee Hartman. He's the Director of Planning Development. Mr. Hartman?
So, good evening again. So some of you have heard this before. When we created the Inclusionary Bylaw in 2006, we never, I can speak at a staff level, envisioned this as being a developer's responsibility. We always looked at the need to provide affordable housing, housing for lower-income families as a community thing. So when we created this bylaw and when we look at the 80 Makepeace requirement, we never ever said that this was okay. The bylaw says you have to do 103 units, and that's your responsibility. Go take care of it. It's a community responsibility. And the decision that was given by the Planning Board simply said you had to provide for 103 affordable units. It didn't say anything more. And again, I look at this as a community responsibility, not solely to developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to continue, bring in Albert Donato as a panelist. He's with Precinct 17, followed by David Golden, Precinct 7. Mr. Donato with us?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Al Donato, Precinct 17.
Welcome.
I believe this article has probably been talked about more the last three months than the invasion of Europe during World War II, Mr. Moderator. And the reason why is this is, as folks are getting their mind around this subsidy, I'm not going to bore you with the numbers. You've heard them now the last two or three months. Most of the boards now are in favor of this. Many people have changed their mind, including the CPC unanimously in favor of this because they understand we're putting up $4 million, but we're getting that deeper subsidy. Even if we take away that upper tier, that two-lower tier, we're getting about $288,000 a year subsidy after 14 years. We get enough credit to equal the $4 million we're putting up. In reviewing Plymouth's over 100 CPC projects the last 20 years, you've done about $50 million worth of projects. But this by far is the greatest investment back for the taxpayer. That will go on forever. The life of that building, we could argue that we're going to get $4 million back in subsidy two or three times. You're going to hear the argument about the 208 agreement. I think anyone under 40 got a hard lesson on inflation the last two years. That dollar in '08, you need now $1.50. And I would argue that property values have gone up just since 2019. So in closing, Mr. Moderator, this gives seniors in Plymouth an auction to sell their home. We've talked about tax increases. $2,000, $2,200 a month does not give them that option. This does. I live two blocks away from this. The neighbors were against it originally. Now I'm finding my neighbors afar. I'm the second-closest town meeting member to this project. I hope you support this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
David Golden, Precinct 7. Stephen Lyden, Precinct 17. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article has been debated a lot in public, in social media, in meetings, across town in many forums. I think we need to focus on the facts when we make our decisions here tonight. Let's talk about some of the facts. 80 Makepeace and the Grantham Group, at their own cost, have done the following. They've moved and reoriented the building at the request of the residents of Red Brook. They've added parking, again at their own cost, again at the request of the residents of Red Brook. And at the behest of dozens of elected and appointed officials across this town, they've added units to the project, again at their own cost, and increasing their overall commitment to the town of Plymouth. Now, 100 years ago on Saturday, Mr. Grandy reminded us that the folks at 80 Makepeace have also been incredible partners and neighbors here in Plymouth. Just to name a few things, they've constructed a field at South Elementary School. They've constructed sidewalks that connect the school to the community. They've provided 2,200-plus acres in open space. They've reconstructed, they've contributed to the reconstruction of numerous intersections in and around the community. And most recently, they donated land for a fire station. What more can we ask of these folks before we help them to help us? I think what's most important to know tonight is that this is going to be the most affordable property that CPC has ever funded. This project is going to provide 43 units of deep affordability to our seniors. Earlier tonight, we voted for 40 units of regular affordability. We can all debate as to whether or not that 80% is affordable, but the 43 that fall into the 60% AMI and the 30% AMI are most certainly affordable. That's what we're buying with this money. We're buying a deep level of affordability, and it's for our seniors who are struggling. Colleagues, please vote yes for this. Thank you.
Stephen Lyden, Precinct 17. Joseph Hutchinson, Precinct 17. Mr. Lyden?
Steve Lyden, Precinct 17. I have to take, I take offense what Mr. Peiser said. I'm 75 years old. I drive. My wife is 60. She drives. So to say people that are moving to Red Brook are too old and they're not going to have cars and they're not going to be able to drive or go anywhere, that's not true. There's no supermarkets down there. There's nothing down there. As far as the medical, I know the doctor. I have a Cape Cod Healthcare. They closed. I had to go find another one. Mass General has no primary physician. So it's not like it's, you know, unique to Red Brook to have these problems. They put them in there to begin with. They did the best they can. So I don't understand. And the other thing is, I hear, oh, we're giving Makepeace money to do this. Makepeace never said that they were going to build 103 units. They said they were going to create. And with this development with Grantham, they are creating units. So it's not like, you know, we're giving them money or they're screwing the town out of money out of $4 million. It's not true. And, you know, and they have done, like Mr. Golden said, they've done so much. And not only that, the neighbors are, the majority of neighbors that I have heard from and talked to are in support of this. There's a few that isn't, but you always have a few, and we always will, and that's fine. Everyone has their opinion. But this is a great project. They have done so much, and this will do so much for the seniors. And where else are you going to get an apartment for like $400 bucks a month? You know, I can't even get a car payment for that. So, you know, it's a great project. 80 Makepeace, I can't say enough about them. They've kept every one of their promises. They've done everything they said they were going to do. So I give them all the credit, and I support this.
Joseph Hutchinson, Precinct 17. Carmen Lefery, Precinct 18.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Almost all of the list of items that Mr. Golden cited are part of the special permit. ADM agreed to do all of those tasks, so just a quick note. And by way of that special permit, the town rezoned about 400 acres of Cranberry Bog Uplands, and ADM was obligated for 103 units of affordable housing. So that 80% layer is assumed. We all want affordable housing for seniors, but we also, I think, need to be careful along the way and not make mistakes that might harm communities as we move forward. The CPC Article 16C is a request to spend $4 million of taxpayer funds over and above the terms of the Red Brook Special Permit. And you might say, is this a wise use of CPA funds? Well, I believe that the CPC process was rushed and that this article got onto the warrant by mistake. The committee deliberation on the vote lasted minutes, not hours, and I question whether that's due diligence. You would have asked questions about the plans for adjacent parcels, trucking, automobile and pedestrian circulation, parking and traffic setbacks and height. And spending $4 million on a largely unquestioned proposal is a mistake that I hope we don't make here this evening. So what do we get for the $4 million? We get the selling point from ADM in the town is 62 deeply affordable units. On the other hand, Grantham Marketing says that it'll produce 19 affordable at 80% AMI, which is already assumed, 30% workforce at 60%, which is arguable, and the town can have access to those tax credits and grants if it focused programmatically on affordable housing, and 13 deeply affordable units at 30% AMI. Over the past two months, ADM has consistently conflated those three categories as deeply affordable, and that's a misrepresentation. The proposal yields 13 units that can be described as deeply affordable, period. Spending $4 million on town funds to get 13 deeply affordable units is the proposition at hand. To be sure, deeply affordable is great marketing, but our decision to spend $4 million becomes muddled and confused with complicated affordable housing language, magical math, and illustrations of a concept for a large apartment tower. The proposal does not include the surrounding context, current or potential abutting structures, and offers no data about long-term parking and traffic. Don't let these confusions take over the main question, which is that we're being asked to pay over and above the special permit terms. I'll finish up by saying that I'd like you to vote no on Article 16C. Delay this voting until, voting on the article-
30 seconds.
-until fall town meeting to give residents and the community time to negotiate a more appropriate location, to understand ADM's plan for the Red Brook Village Commons Parcels, and to understand how to participate with the planning board in a process to monitor ADM's progress toward affordable housing goals. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Carmen Lefery, 18. Benny Kowakko, Precinct 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a two-part question. One of them goes to the Grantham rep. Is the 62 one-bedroom unit project a $4 million not-to-exceed contract?
Walter Ohanian, Grantham Group.
Pardon me? It's $4 million we're asking from the CPC, correct?
Is it a not-to-exceed contract? I'm sorry.
You'd only be voting on $4 million, so it wouldn't exceed $4 million, and it wouldn't correct.
Okay.
Mr. Lefery.
I'm sorry?
Further questions or comments?
Yes, I have one more question. Who from the town of Plymouth will oversee and help minimize any potential change orders that will require more funding from the town of Plymouth, like it happened in the project in Concord, Mass?
Anyone here to respond to the question, Carmen Lefery, Precinct 18, regarding oversight from the town of Plymouth in connection with job? Yes, Mr. Ohanian?
So the town will actually get to a closing if, when all parties are available to be able to put their funds in to the project, and we get to be able to hopefully get an award of tax credits and be able to get the town meeting approval for the $4 million. Once we get to an award, we go through something that the town has, excuse me, that the state has, that basically takes care of all shareholders in the project. They'll use an outside architect to be able to ensure that the project has met- They'll use an outside architect to be able to ensure that the project has met its qualifications to be able to build the building properly. And then those reports are shared with the town itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lefery?
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty Kovakow, Precinct Six, followed by Russell Shirley, Plymouth Housing Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I haven't been a town meeting member for very long, but I have been in town government for a little bit. And I have to say that in all my years of being in town government, this is the first organization that has ever come to the town and CPC with such deeply affordable housing for our seniors. We have to remember that we are now an age and dementia-friendly community. We have to take care of our seniors. And this is an offer that I don't think we can refuse. I don't think there's anything muddled about it. I think it's perfectly clear that the Grantham Group and AD Makepeace want to help us with our senior population. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Shirley, precinct, is the chair of the Plymouth Housing Authority, followed by Mr. Lyden, town meeting member.
Thank you, Steve. I know that the vote for this from the CPC was not a hundred percent. I sit on the CPC, one of, I was one of two that voted against this, but I can tell you now I'm in full support of this. And I encourage town meeting to support the article.
Stephen Lyden, Precinct Seventeen, followed by Kimberly Karas-
Thank you.
Point of order?
Jeffrey DeLapp.
Mr. Moderator, move the question.
Motion to close debate is not debatable. We have two people who are standing who wish to be heard, and we have one person in the queue. So town meeting members, when the light goes on, you can determine whether to close debate. It's two-thirds vote. You can vote now. You're voting whether to close debate on Article sixteen C, which is affordable housing, Cranberry Commons at Red Brook, a motion to appropriate four million dollars. Town meeting members are now voting on whether to close debate on Article sixteen C. The motion passes. We'll go to the, vote on the main motion. If not, we'll continue to debate. Town meeting is voting on Article sixteen C. It's a motion for affordable housing. The voting has concluded. We'll now determine whether or not ninety-one say yes, thirty-nine say no, zero abstentions, it does carry. We're closing the debate on Article sixteen C. We're going to move to voting on the main motion. This is a two-thirds vote on this particular matter. And as we scroll through the precincts on the motion to close debate, we'll finish with the last three precincts, and now we're going to vote on Article sixteen C. When the light goes on, you can vote on Article sixteen C. This is supported by OTI Technologies. It's coming to you live, Plymouth North High School. Please vote. You now have twenty seconds in which to vote. We're in the Center for Performing Arts at Plymouth North High School, located in Aubrey Street. This is our Monday evening session. We are in the second half, following our initial recess. Town meeting has been, began at six o'clock this evening, and we will continue and go through the warrant until a motion to adjourn or a motion to dissolve. The voting has concluded on Article sixteen C, affordable housing. One oh four, yes. No, thirty-one. One abstentions, it does carry. And while we scroll through the precincts, I have a motion to reconsider Article fourteen. Nancy Davis, precinct two, moves to reconsider Article fourteen accessory dwelling units. Ms. Nancy Davis, please come forward. This is a debatable motion, a motion to reconsider. Nancy Davis was on the prevailing side and she voted in favor. Nancy Davis?
Hi. So I just wanted people to be aware of that we already have on the bylaws, zoning bylaws, two oh seven, family suite, the accessory use of a portion of a single-family residence subordinate in relation to the area of the principal dwelling and distinguish from the principal area of the residence without use of structural barriers or doors between living spaces, yada, yada, yada. The area in use of the family suite does not exceed twelve hundred square feet, and we're only talking about nine hundred. But anyway, occupancy is limited to, and here's the difference, siblings, children, parents, grandparents, or in-laws are the resident owner. So point being, what we were looking to pass, I don't know if there was some confusion about it, but it's basically, you know, a stranger and a smaller unit. But we already have something in the bylaws, very similar to that. So I wanted people to be very clear on what we were voting for and to also understand that, you know, there was this big thing about the sewer. I think that's a whole separate issue that we have to deal with anyway. But, you know, you could consider having a baby would add a problem, or another kid, or, you know, taking in a foster child or whatever would add, someone else using your bathroom. Anyway, so just motion to reconsider in terms of, it's, you know, we've already got something in there and we're basically just adding another one that says it's a little smaller and you can have a stranger.
Further discussion on a motion to reconsider Article fourteen. Betsy Hall is coming forward. She is a town meeting member, article from precinct sixteen. Betsy Hall?
Thank you. Several speakers on Article fourteen got up and talked about having a family member able to stay in a separate apartment in their home. And at the time, I wasn't sure, but I had remembered that Lee Hartman had mentioned in our caucus that we already have on the books in our zoning bylaws, the opportunity at any time to have an in-law, a sibling, a child, grandparent, whatever, family member come and stay in a separate apartment in our homes, if we wanted to create that. And actually, Mr. Hartman said there are already several hundred in-law apartments right now in the town of Plymouth. So I think that because a couple of speakers spoke so strongly that they wished that this were available to family members, that maybe they didn't realize that we already have on our zoning bylaws that opportunity. So if that was a confusion for people, if people were voting for the ability to have a family member in a separate apartment, we already have that by right in our zoning. Thank you.
Motion to reconsider is a majority vote. It's debatable. Catherine Holmes, followed by Richard Surkey.
So I can't believe that we're doing this, but here we go. There are people sitting in this room right now that are trying to go through a divorce, and they can't split up their house because they have small children. They can't afford to pay for another house. So one parent's going to have to move out. And this is a reality that is happening in Plymouth right now. So housing prices are so high that we have people that don't know how to move out. So they're living together in separate floors right now. And there are people in this room that are dealing with this. They want a divorce, but they can't go out and buy a new home, and then they're still going to have to pay child support, so they physically can't afford it. That's one point. Two, not every house in Plymouth is capable of doing an in-law apartment. They physically don't have the space. So the ADU solves that problem. Thank you.
Yes, first, precinct eight, Mary. If you could stop pressing your handset if you're not sure, could you please come up and see OTI Technologies? It's creating havoc with the technology. Mr. Surkey?
There's a fundamental distinction between a family suite and an ADU. A family suite has interior access between the, 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 one, the smaller unit and the major unit. So there's, the, the ADU precludes interior access. And so the ADU is designed for a non-family member in order to provide greater income for the original owner of the house. The, the, the family suite, that's intended for somebody in the family because there'll be interior access between the two. But if you're looking at a person who is unable to pay her taxes and needs the extra income and doesn't have an extended family, the ADU is the only way to allow this to happen.
So again, this is a motion to reconsider, so we're not debating or re-debating Article fourteen. We're debating whether or not to reopen Article fourteen and start all over again on the debate for ADU. So unless, yes?
Motion to close debate?
Motion to close debate is not debatable. We'll see how many people we have standing who still want to be heard. I think I see one in the room and one in the queue. So at this time, when the light goes on, you'll, actually, we can't do anything. The name is Mary Tinker, Tincher. You're, we can't vote until you stop pressing your button. So, Mary, if you could do that, that would be greatly appreciated. So let's see if we can go forward. And bring your handset forward if it's having a problem. So with that being said, we're going to vote on whether to close debate when the light goes on. We can't vote. Okay. I'm being told we cannot vote until this issue is resolved. So I'd like to take this moment to say that we're going to continue to go through the warrant after this, and we will go to Article sixteen D. I'd like to also take this opportunity to do a few thank yous. We greatly appreciate all the work of the assistant moderator, Nicole Manfredi, also Jeanette from the Advisory and Finance. Couldn't do this without her. I'm grateful to all the support from Kelly, the town clerk. Also, the entire Advisory and Finance Committee, they put in so much time as we prepare for town meeting. Thank you to all of the other boards and committees and the staff in the town, doing all kinds of hard work. And town meeting members, you ought to be congratulated. We're closing in on eleven hours so far with this town meeting. So thank you. And OTI tells us that we are now ready. So we are going to vote on whether to close debate on the procedural motion for a reconsideration of Article fourteen. When the light goes on, you'll decide whether to close debate. OTI is supporting us. They've cleared up that little glitch where, thank you. You're voting now. You're voting as to whether to close debate on a procedural motion to reconsider Article fourteen accessory dwelling units. A yes vote will reopen Article fourteen, a no will move on to Article sixteen D. We're closing debate. We're determining whether to close debate, right? Determining whether to close debate and then we'll vote. Right now, you're deciding whether to close debate on the motion to reconsider. Thank you. Just checking, making sure you're paying attention. One twenty-seven say yes, let's close debate. Nine say no. Zero abstentions. We'll go through the precincts, but we are going to close debate at this time, and we're going to move on to motion from precinct two, Nancy Davis, town meeting member, who moves to reconsider Article fourteen accessory dwelling units. When the light goes on, you'll now vote as to whether to reconsider Article fourteen. Article fourteen, this is a procedural motion, and it's available to town meeting members when you vote on the prevailing side. We have a number of people, yeah, that, watch the click. You've got to wait for the light before you can start voting, otherwise you'll show up as a point of order. This is coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. We're waiting for the light to come on so that we can go ahead and vote on the motion to reconsider Article fourteen. It is a procedural motion. What?
Yeah. No.
Excuse me?
He doesn't have to make the slide. He's pushing buttons. The light's not-
So I'm being told that they're making the slide, which we could just use a slide that says procedural motion, which would be fine. And for those of you watching on cable, this is your annual town meeting. These are your town meeting members. There are a hundred and sixty-two elected, and many of them are here this evening or participating remotely. We have a hybrid model, which allows town meeting to be voting with a blend of in-person and remote. And we are, if you wish to be in-person, we are in-person at Plymouth North High School on Aubrey Street, and we are in the Center for Performing Arts. We also thank Plymouth North High School for all of their support throughout town meeting, also the local scene. We're now going to vote. The light is on. You're voting whether to reconsider Article fourteen accessory dwelling units. A yes will reconsider, a no will move on to sixteen D. You're voting whether to reconsider. It's a procedural motion and it's a majority vote. Town meeting can decide whether or not to change the order, whether to reconsider, whether to close debate. They're deciding now whether to reconsider. Motion to reconsider, it's end. Twenty-four say yes, no, one eleven, zero abstention. We will not be reconsidering Article fourteen. We're going to move on to Article sixteen D. It's a motion for open space. Jenny Pond, Town Brook Trails. Mr. Nearman moves the town appropriate the sum of three million to pay the cost of the creation and a restoration and rehabilitation of land for recreational use pursuant to the Community Preservation Act. Mr. Nearman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approve Article sixteen D. Approval of this article will create, improve, and enhance the trails along Town Brook. The funding will be used to upgrade the existing paths, electrical wiring conduit, lighting, landscaping, drainage, stone walls, and aesthetics of the Town Brook Trail from Main Street Extension Bridge to Brewster Gardens. Supplemental funding to replace the footbridge at Jenny Pond, along with associated ADA sidewalks and lighting.
It's a two-thirds vote. We have staff available to answer questions, also Mr. Cohen from the Community Preservation. Are there any questions at this time? If not, we're going to move to the vote. It's a two-thirds vote. When the light goes on, you can vote on sixteen D. Town meeting will be voting on Article sixteen D from the Community Preservation Committee. Again, wait until the light goes on before you vote, otherwise it registers you as wanting to speak on the motion. The light is now on. You can now vote. You're voting on Article sixteen D. It's a two-thirds vote, and it is a vote for open space at Jenny Pond and Town Brook Trails. Town meeting is now voting as we're continuing through the warrant, and we will continue until we complete the warrant. We'll also take up any other motions that might come before the committee and the town meeting. The light is off. One thirty, yes, three no, one abstentions. It carries by more than two-thirds. We now move to sixteen E. While you look at the votes of the people in the room and remote. Sixteen E is a motion to reduce borrowing for the Pilgrim Hall Museum. Mr. Nearman moves the town appropriates the sum of two million, four hundred, sixty-six thousand, seven hundred, ninety-nine dollars. And I would note that within the text of this, there's a reference to the Pilgrim Hall Meeting Museum, but the motion is going to be, Madam Clerk, the Pilgrim Hall Museum, not the Pilgrim Hall Meeting Museum. Mr. Nearman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for that edit. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approve Article sixteen E. Approval of this article will authorize the town to use available fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Act revenues to reduce the borrowing commitment for the historical preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation for the Pilgrim Hall Museum.
It's a majority vote. Further discussion, seeing none. We're going to call for a vote on sixteen E. As soon as the light goes on, we're going to vote. It'll be a majority vote. Town meeting will be voting again in-person and also remotely. You can vote now. You're voting on Article sixteen E. It's to reduce borrowing for the Pilgrim Hall Museum. Town meeting have, has been in session this evening since six PM. We are closing in on the nine o'clock hour. We are in Article sixteen E, and we will continue through the rest of the warrant. We have twenty-one articles. Thank you. The voting has concluded. And now we're saying one thirty-six, yes, one no, zero abstentions. So we have a hundred and thirty-seven town meeting members voting overwhelmingly to reduce the borrowing for the Pilgrim Hall Museum. One thirty-seven out of one sixty-two. And as we scroll through the precincts, Article sixteen F is to reduce borrowing at Stevensfield. Mr. Nearman moves the town appropriates the sum of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, forty-one dollars from fiscal year 2025 estimated revenues. Mr. Nearman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approve Article sixteen F. Approval of this article will authorize the town to use fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Act revenues to reduce the borrowing commitment for the restoration and rehabilitation of Stevensfield.
Further discussion, hearing none. Call for a vote on sixteen F to reduce the borrowing for Stevensfield. When the light goes on, you can begin voting. You'll have twenty seconds in which to vote on Article sixteen F, reduce borrowing at Stevensfield. You can vote now. Town- Meeting is now voting on Article 16f. It's a majority vote to reduce the borrowing at Stevens Field. And after this, we'll move on to Article 17. This is the last Article 16 motion from the Community Preservation Committee. Article 16f, reduce borrowing at Stevens Field. Town Meeting Members are now voting. And the voting, when it concludes now, we'll have the totals on what is the pleasure of Town Meeting on a majority. 135, yes, one, no, zero abstentions. We have 136 voting this time out of 162. The motion carries overwhelmingly, and we move to Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, aren't we doing 16g?
I'm sorry, what?
16g?
16g, which is not in my book. Thank you, but we're going to go right to it. Mr. Neeran moves the town vote to appropriate the sum of $273,653 from the fiscal year 2025 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Budget and debt service as follows. You have the text, Mr. Neeran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that Town Meeting approve Article 16g. Approval of this article will allow the Community Preservation Committee to allocate 10% of estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund, CPA, to future, for future spending in community housing. Additionally, 4% of the estimated annual revenues of the CPA will be set aside for funding administrative and operational expenses, and an annual, and an amount will be set aside for interest expense on debt.
It's a majority vote. Discussion, hearing none. We'll call for the vote. When the light goes on, you can vote on Article 16g, and this will be the last vote on Article 16. You can vote now. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. Upon conclusion, we then will go on to Article 17. Article 16g, Town Meeting Members are voting in-person and remotely. We've been averaging 136, 137 out of 162. In our second day of Town Meeting, this is the annual Town Meeting, coming to you live from Plymouth North High School on Monday, August 8. The voting has concluded, and we are now going to see what the vote is. 131, yes, two, no, one abstentions, it carries overwhelmingly. As we watch the vote from the Members, Article 17, amending the bylaw, Chapter 23, Article I, dog control. Mr. Neeran moves that the town vote to amend general bylaws, Chapter 23, Animals, Article I, Dog Control, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the proposed language as shown in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee and on file with the Town Clerk. Mr. Neeran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends with unanimous vote that Town Meeting approve Article 17. Again, to place this in context, this article came up before us. We were not comfortable with the language. We sent the Town Clerk back to work on it again. She came back with a very acceptable proposed language that we could live with. So we approved it unanimously, and approval of this article will amend general bylaws, Chapter 23, Animals, Article 1, Dog Control, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing with the proposed language as on file with the Town Clerk.
It's a majority vote. Any discussion? Hearing none. We're going to call for the vote on Article 17. It's an amending a bylaw, and it's a majority vote. You can vote now. Town Meeting Members are voting on whether to amend the bylaw regarding dog control. It's a majority vote. And following the vote, we will continue with Article 18. Article 17 is currently under consideration by Town Meeting. Town Meeting Members are voting. They have 20 seconds in which to vote. When the voting concludes, we will get a total as to the vote by people in-person and remote. We have a hybrid Town Meeting, 131, yes, one, no, and we have three abstentions. It carries overwhelmingly. Article 18, MBTA Communities, Mr. Neeran moves the town vote to amend the Plymouth zoning bylaw in accordance with the final report of the Planning Board on the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw by adding a new district, Section 206.6. Mr. Neeran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that Town Meeting approve Article 18. Approval of this article will amend the Plymouth zoning bylaw by adding a new district, Section 206.6, multi-family overlay district, and amend other sections of the zoning bylaw as necessary to create an as-of-right multi-family overlay district in compliance with the Commonwealth's MBTA Communities Law, Mass., Mass. General Law 40A, Section 3A, including establishing dimensional affordable housing, signage, parking, and procedural requirements related thereto, and to amend the official zoning map sheet number two to delineate the district. The state has mandated that communities such as Plymouth comply with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Housing Choice Initiative. In 2021, the Massachusetts Legislature enacted the law requiring all 177 cities and towns in the MBTA service area to adopt zoning that encourages multi-family housing.
It's a majority vote. It's debatable. Seeing none. We're going to call for the vote. When the light goes on, you can vote on Article 18. It's a majority vote. And Town Meeting is continuing to go through the warrant, voting now on Article 18. When the light goes on, you can vote now on Article 18. It is a majority vote. And Town Meeting is continuing with the vote on Article 18. And we will continue following the vote to continue through the warrant. Town Meeting is voting on Article 18. And when the light goes off, we will now see what the total is on Article 18. 127, yes, six, no, three abstentions, it carries overwhelmingly. We are now going to move, while we see the vote on 18, to Article 19. Article 19 is to amend Chapter 90, Section E, Historically Significant Buildings. Mr. Neeran moves the town vote to amend its general bylaws, Chapter 90, Section E, the preservation of historically significant buildings, Section 3.3, by adding the underlying text and deleting the strike-through text as follows. And you have the text, Mr. Neeran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee, by unanimous vote, recommends Town Meeting approve Article 19. Approval of this article will amend general bylaws, Chapter 90, Section E, the preservation of historically significant buildings, subsection 3.3, to increase the determination period from 14 days to 21 days relative to the demolition delay bylaw.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. When the light goes on, you can vote on Article 19, contained in the warrant. We're supported by OTI Technologies. Thank you for their work this evening, led by Mark Fite. You can vote now. The light is on. You have 20 seconds in which to vote on Article 19. Article 19 is a majority vote, and it is a motion from the Advisory and Finance Committee and from its Chair, Stephen Neeran. We are voting on Article 19. Town Meeting is concluding. The vote will come before us now. It is a merge vote. 132, yes, no, three, zero abstentions. The motion carries overwhelmingly. And while we scroll through the precincts, you will see that Article 20 is withdrawn. Article 21 has been previously voted by Town Meeting. At this time, Mr. Neeran votes to dissolve Plymouth's annual Town Meeting. It is debatable. Would anybody care to debate it? If not, we're going to, when the light goes on, we're going to vote on whether to dissolve Plymouth's annual Town Meeting. OTI will give us the light. You'll have a chance to vote. We'll make it official for the town of Plymouth to complete and dissolve the spring annual Town Meeting. When the light goes on, you'll be able to vote. Town Meeting are voting in-person and remotely. We're waiting for the light to go on, and when it does, we will vote now. You're voting on whether to dissolve Plymouth's annual Town Meeting, which has been brought to you at Plymouth North High School with the support of PAC TV, OTI Technologies, the Plymouth Public Schools, and many other people who have been assembled. This is the vote to dissolve the annual Town Meeting. And once the light goes off, we'll get the total. And the total on the vote to dissolve is going to be as follows from OTI Technology. We're waiting for the vote totals on the motion to dissolve. 131, yes, no, one, zero abstentions. The Town Meeting is dissolved. 9:07 p.m. Thank you.